I want you to understand how demented I think this gentleman was. Greg and I are working and we're watching CNN. And it was the mass shooting that occurred in San Diego at the McDonald's. Twenty-two people died that day. Michael Swango just watches with a big smile on his face. He goes, "Wouldn't that be great to see?" "My God, you know, this is unbelievable. I wish I was there to see it all."
And he got so excited and ran over and turned the TV up. We looked at him, "What's wrong with you?"
He wanted to see the death and destruction.
For him, violence and death was sexually arousing.
As he got older, he became ever more fixated on this, working as an emergency medical technician so he could be there at these scenes of these horrible incidents.
He just loved being an EMT, appearing on the scene. The more cars involved in the crash, the more bodies, the better.
Police in Columbus, Ohio were investigating the suspicious deaths that had occurred at the Ohio State University Hospital where Dr. Michael Swango had been an intern. At the same time, Dr. Michael Swango was on trial for poisoning his paramedic colleagues in Quincy, Illinois.
From the very beginning, it was controversial because Mike Swango had a lot of friends that he went to school with who were convinced that he was being railroaded.
We had a lot of people thinking we were setting Mike up and that we were doing this to Mike because we didn't like him.
When it came out, we went through the files at the newspaper and, you know, there was nothing that was not glowing about him.
His likability within the community was without question. But then, Dr. Michael Swango opted for a bench trial where only the judge would hear the evidence and make a decision. And that move baffled many in the courtroom.
Well, it's a bench trial, so Judge Gashman was the judge and the jury.
I was a little curious, frankly, why he waived his right to jury trial. If he had had his case heard in front of a jury, I think he would have had a chance of convincing one or more of the jurors that, "How could a doctor do something like this?"
I think he thought that he was so brilliant, he could convince the judge of his innocence.
He wanted to go one-on-one and enjoy that experience.
Michael Swango, he just looks like the kind of guy you would want to be your doctor.
I have tried my utmost to be the best person and the best physician I can be. And that's all anyone can do.
He was a very polite, good-looking young man who was very articulate, a former Marine. And there was nothing that was not glowing about him.
But people think Swango may be using his brilliant mind and medical skills to play with people's lives.
This was a person who should not be licensed to practice medicine.
Michael Swango was a convicted felon.
He had poisoned his coworkers as an EMT in Quincy, Illinois.
I'm not thinking that that donut that I'm eating is laced with poison. Nobody thinks that the cup with soda is going to be injected with arsenic. That's what makes him so dangerous.
He was trying to kill me.
You had this trail, this trail of death and illness under suspicious causes that were attached to this doctor.
When he was in medical school, his fellow students referred to him as "Double-O Swango, Licensed to Kill."
He had the highest death rate of any of the interns down there.
Swango was dismissed from the surgical residency program at the Ohio State University Hospitals.
Nurses are all afraid to be around him. They sense something is wrong with this man.
According to reports, Swango was suspected of killing at least one patient there.
Cindy McKee was a 19-year-old gymnast. She was in a trauma unit, but we could see she was getting better.
She's actually improving until she gets a visit from Michael Swango. Then she dies unexpectedly.
There may have been some warning signs, but they really didn't add up those things at the time.
Some doctor was poisoning people.
This was a murder.
After serving two years of his five-year sentence for poisoning his colleagues, Dr. Michael Swango is released from Centralia Prison in August of 1987.
After he got out, I didn't know whether he would be coming after for revenge or not.
The news media outlets were somewhat concerned because we knew we were portraying him in not good light. But I don't think the general public had any real concern because he was not on anybody's radar.
Back then, you didn't have a 24-hour news cycle, and this would have stayed a local story, and people outside that region would not know who he was. And he used that to his advantage because he still wanted to practice medicine and he still wanted to kill people.
And that's exactly what he did.
Michael Swango has been a first-year resident, a student doctor, in Sioux Falls for the past five months. He worked at all three hospitals here. But it wasn't until this story aired on The Justice File that people began worrying about Dr. Swango.
We got a tip from someone who worked at one of the hospitals. This person recognized him on a show she had watched the night before. It was called Justice Files. It talked about how he had poisoned his coworkers. And she was like, "What in the world is this guy doing in our medical residency program and treating patients? This guy could be dangerous."
The story on the Discovery Channel series, Justice Files, was actually a repeat. It had originally aired on ABC's 20/20 on February 13, 1986. While Dr. Michael Swango was in prison for poisoning his colleagues, he sat down for an interview with John Stossel.
We got permission from the prison in Illinois to interview him, and he was very convincing.
I'm not guilty. I didn't do those things.
In that ABC News program, 20/20, Dr. Michael Swango had an answer for everything.
I would say, "Well, what about the ant poison? I had an ant problem."
I don't know anything about ants. All I know is I had an ant problem, and I took care of it as best I could.
What about all these other poisons? Oh, if you looked at any suburban home, you'd find lots of things that the lawyers could spin as a poison. Okay, started to wonder.
You care of the horrendous things that he's accused of and that he's been found guilty of. And, you know, you just think, "Well, this has to be some kind of a monster." But that's not how he comes across.
The crime did not fit the person in front of you.
When the report came on and they put a picture up of Mike and said that he was accused of poisoning his coworkers, you could have knocked me over with a feather because I couldn't believe it.
The staff at all three medical centers where Dr. Michael Swango worked were shocked. But no one was more surprised than his fiancee, a nurse named Kristen Kinney, also known as KK.
KK worked with us, and she also didn't believe it. She just said, "Not the Mike I know."
I thought he was guilty going in. And then during the interview, I had doubts. And by the end of it, I was thinking, "Maybe he didn't do it."
Dr. Michael Swango's future in the internal medicine residency program here in Sioux Falls is uncertain, after the Discovery Channel aired a program on Swango's conviction for poisoning paramedics.
Now, I didn't think that you could spend time in jail for poisoning people and come out and be a physician. But boy, I was wrong. Because that's exactly what he did.
This is a common scene at all three Sioux Falls hospitals: employees reviewing files, files of patients who were treated by Dr. Michael Swango.
The hospitals did their own investigations. And what they told me is that they looked at every case that he had anything to do with.
And a review of all the patients did ultimately conclude that it had nothing to do with anything that had happened here. But the fear with Swango was high. We didn't know at the time if he was a danger to anybody but a patient.
We had had a Christmas party. The party was at one of our nurse's house, and her husband was a detective on the police force. And so he literally followed Mike everywhere he went to make sure that he wasn't putting anything in any of the food or whatever. All of us were pretty okay with that.
Dr. Michael Swango is suspended from working in the Sioux Falls hospitals because he lied about his past. Governor George Mickelson wants Swango fired immediately. He wants to know the whole story of how Dr. Swango ended up here.
We talked to the admissions director from the University of South Dakota Medical School, and that was really kind of enlightening. Because Swango didn't put down that he had a felony, but he explained it away by saying, "Well, it was a misunderstanding."
Swango did admit that he was in prison. He just didn't tell the truth about why he had been there.
He lied. He said he was in a bar fight.
He had the story about him coming to some woman's aide in a bar restaurant when she was being harassed by some other people and getting into a fistfight, and he hurt people.
I ended up ultimately talking to the head of the department at the University of South Dakota. And he was kind of astonished to learn that Michael Swango had been convicted of administering a toxic substance.
I was not aware of the full facts or the full circumstances surrounding his situation.
I think he just talked his way into these places, and people would believe him because he was believable.
The whistle was blown, and they kicked him out.
I want to clearly acknowledge that we made a mistake in admitting this person into our program.
He wanted to do an interview with me on camera, just to try to convince people that he was innocent.
Michael Swango says he should be allowed to stay in the residency program because he did nothing wrong.
We discussed fully what the implications were of coming into the program, the possibility of completing three years and then being licensed. That was certainly something that I deserved to have the chance to do.
When it got toward the end of this whole investigation, he was talking to everybody about everything, anything, you know, just to try to convince people that he was, you know, innocent.
Despite his claims of innocence, Dr. Michael Swango was officially dismissed from the medical school program in South Dakota. And in the spring of 1993, he and his fiancee, Kristen Kinney, left town.
When they went into his house after he was gone, it was full of poisons.
And after he left Sioux Falls, supposedly, the behavior really did not change. It's like he skirted right under the law.
They say Mike Swango skated under the law. What does that mean? We read 50% of the book at this point, so I mean, we can make an informed conclusion, observation. What we've read from James B. Stewart's Blind Eye, has Michael Swango skated? Is that the most accurate way to say this? This white man, this charming white man skated? Come on, man. Aided and abetted by numerous powerful white medical officials throughout the northwestern hemisphere, continental U.S. Context of White Supremacy, the Catherine Massey Book Club, seventh installment on James Stewart's Blind Eye. The audio segment that we heard at the very beginning from the documentary film, or it's a documentary series, rather, Very Scary People, and they have two installments on Mr. Swango called Doctor Death. And you can just check it out. They have part one and part two. We just heard some snippets, like three hours of viewing for people who love watching TV. The, just a few of the things that stood out for one, they talked about how, for Swango, killing was a sexually arousing activity. We've heard that before. That's old Timothy McVeigh and a number of these different white killers that we've heard, Jeffrey Dahmer, a number of these different white killers that we've heard, you know, and white people, period. The sexual gratification of killing. In fact, even the lynchings and such, same type of thing. We heard the, also some of the paramedics, white paramedics who were poisoned, where when they're going to prosecute him in Illinois, saying that they had lots of white people who didn't believe this, they thought, you know, "Hey, you're trying to set up old charming Swango. This is a swell white dude. He certainly couldn't have done all of this." Man, if any of you all had been accused of poisoning your white coworkers, do you think you would have had that sort of vigorous defense? Next, they talked about the same thing that we did, about, you know, why would he opt for a bench trial and what an error that was. Next, they talked about charming, good-looking, the type of guy. He looked like the type of guy you would want to be your doctor. What does that even mean? And what does that type of person look like? Lil Wayne? Dick Gregory? Dr. Shahrazad Ali? What does that type of person... Oh, Mike Swango. Got it. White. And then they just get good-looking. I said that last week. People went and looked, you know, at some of his images and such online. Like, are you serious? This guy is so good-looking that everyone, before we can even get to how many folks he killed and poisoned and all the rest, well, Mike Swango was, "Ooh, I just got the swoon. That was a good-looking white man." I mean, I have seen models and all the rest of it, but, woo, that Mike Swango, I wanted to give him a kiss. What does it mean to be white? We are moving on to the New York portion of the book, picking up in chapter nine. Now, he's moved on to the SUNY Stony Brook Institution, where they also think he is charming and better than the foreign, probably non-white physicians. Catherine Massey Book Club, Context of White Supremacy, audio segment one.
Al and Sharon Cooper spent the first two weeks of July vacationing in North Carolina. They had begged Kristen to join them, but she insisted she had to keep working to make more money. They didn't understand why she'd had to use the credit card they gave her and borrow money from them, loans she carefully documented in a notebook and promised to repay. They had no idea her savings had been drained by Swango. On the evening of July 14, Kristen received a collect call from Michael. Her neighbor became concerned because during the lengthy conversation, she heard Kristen screaming, then sobbing. Then Kristen called her mother. Sharon was immediately alarmed. Kristen wasn't herself. She was remote, distant. Her voice seemed flat. "Come stay with us," Sharon pleaded.
"No, Mom, I'm fine," Kristen insisted. "I love you."
When she hung up, Sharon broke into sobs. "There's something terribly wrong with Kristen. I'm leaving. I'm going down there," she told Al. "Stop it," he said, urging her to get a grip on herself. "She's 27 years old. Give her some space." Sharon got on the phone to her sister.
"Please go see if Kristen is all right," she begged. But her sister, too, said she was overreacting. Kristen was a grown-up, and if she needed or wanted her mother, she'd ask.
Then the phone rang, and it was Michael calling from New York, the last person Sharon wanted to speak to. Michael said he'd just spoken to Kristen and suggested Sharon call her. "She sounds like she's upset," he said.
"Well, apparently, she's calmed down," Sharon replied. She told Michael she'd just spoken to her daughter. "Are you sure you shouldn't go down there?" Sharon said no, that Kristen had been very even-toned and collected by the time they finished speaking.
The next morning, after a restless night, Sharon said she had to see Kristen and suggested she and Al drive over to give her their house key in case she ever wanted to come and stay with them. They arrived at her apartment in Portsmouth at about 10:00 AM. There was no answer, which was surprising since Kristen was working the 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM shift at the hospital. There was no sign of a red truck, so it appeared that she was out. The Coopers drove past some of her favorite places and then drove aimlessly, hoping to spot her truck. They returned home that afternoon, then called the hospital. Kristen had called in sick. It was too hot and humid to go anywhere else, not that they had any more ideas about where to look. The mercury was over 90 degrees. Exhausted from worry, Sharon went to bed early. She heard the phone ring at about 9:00 PM, and Al answered. Then he came into the bedroom, threw some clothes toward her, and said, "Get up. Kristen's in trouble."
"Why?" she asked, panicked. But Al had no explanation. All the police had said was that they should come to the Newport News police station.
Sharon and Al were nearly silent in the car. Sharon's mind was racing. What could Kristen have done? They were going to police headquarters, a jail. Had she been drunk? That was very unlike Kristen. Had she been arrested for a traffic offense? But did the police put you in jail for a traffic offense? It must be something more serious. Bank robbery? She knew Kristen was short of money. "Honey, I don't think this looks good," Al said gently, but Sharon barely heard him. At the station, they were greeted by a police officer.
"Can you tell me why you're detaining my daughter?" Sharon asked indignantly.
"We'll talk to you upstairs," he said. They were taken on the elevator and shown to a second-floor room. The police officer avoided their gaze. They waited for what seemed hours, but was probably only a few minutes. A second police officer entered and introduced himself. "Your daughter has been found shot through the chest," he said.
"Where is she?" Sharon asked, tears welling in her eyes, thinking she had to get to the hospital.
There was silence.
"Take me to her," she demanded.
"We can't," the officer said. "She's at the medical examiner's office." Sharon was motionless. Life seemed suspended. Then the officer said he had a photograph, and she heard Al say he'd identify Kristen.
"No," Sharon exclaimed. "I will."
The officer placed a photograph on the table in front of her. It was Kristen's face. Her head was leaning against a tree. Sharon had seen enough corpses in her work as an emergency room nurse to know that her daughter was dead. Kristen left several notes. One, found at the site of her death, was evidently written as the effect of tranquilizing drugs began to be felt, for the writing trails off at the end. It read, "I am, I am finally happy. My greatest joy in my life has been my work. I love my patients, and many love me back. I never felt better than when I was taking care of a critical patient. I excelled, and I cherished it." Another, found in her apartment, was addressed to Mom and Alp.
"Please be sure Myko gets some money to hold him until the end of July. I love you both so much. I just didn't want to be here anymore. Just found day-to-day living a constant struggle with my thoughts. I'd say I'm sorry, but I'm not. I feel that sense of peace, peace of mind I've been looking for. It's nice. Take care and go travel more. Love, KK."
At the bottom, she added, "I'll be seeing you." Another brief note was addressed to Myko.
"I love you more. You're the most precious man I've ever known. Love, KK."
A fourth note said, "I want Myko to have all of my belongings. Kristen L. Kinney." When the Coopers finally got home, still stunned, it was nearly 2:00 AM. Sharon called Swango in New York. Evidently still awake, he answered immediately. When she told him the news, he paused briefly, as if collecting his thoughts, then said, "I'm sorry. When's the funeral?" He said he'd be down the next day and asked if he could stay in Kristen's apartment. Sharon was too numb to object. Sharon and Al couldn't bear to see Kristen's things. Sharon called her sister and asked her to go over to the apartment before Swango got there. Kristen's aunt stayed briefly and found the notes on the kitchen table. She also took Kristen's journal, in which the last entry was the sadly optimistic, "I know it will get better." At Kristen's funeral, there was an outpouring of sympathy from Sharon's and Kristen's friends in the nursing community and many others. Swango mostly kept to himself, saying little and avoiding Kristen's friends. He talked mostly to Bert Gee, a respiratory therapist who had become a friend of Kristen's when she was working in Florida. Gee had evidently become much closer to Swango than the Coopers had realized. He stayed with Swango in Kristen's apartment. Despite all that had happened, Sharon felt sorry for Michael. She did find it odd that he showed so little emotion. She went over to him after the funeral ceremony and put her arm around him. He said, "You know, Kristen would not have wanted this. She would not have wanted all these people here." Expecting to comfort and perhaps be comforted, Sharon was taken aback by the hostility in his tone and suddenly wanted to get away from him. "Here," she said, giving him a necklace that Kristen had loved. And though she had little spare money herself, she gave him $200 in cash, in an attempt to heed Kristen's wish that he have enough money to get through the month of July. Swango took the gifts, but then said, "I would have thought Kristen would have handled this better."
"How dare you," Sharon retorted, hurt and angry. "I'm her mother."
In South Dakota, Vern Cook had learned of Kristen's death from a reporter at the Argus Leader, which also ran a brief obituary. He was so devastated, he had to leave work. That night, Swango called him with the news, the first time he'd heard from him since he left Sioux Falls three months earlier. Swango called again after Kristen's funeral, and Cook thought he was upset over her death. But their conversation quickly shifted to Swango's new residency on Long Island. Swango told Cook he was using a false name and had lied about his conviction, defying Cook's advice. Cook was furious with him. "Mike, what the fuck are you doing?" Swango insisted that he felt he had no alternative. He had to lie and conceal his past, or he'd never complete a residency. Two days after the funeral, Michael left for Long Island. When the Coopers finally mustered the strength to visit their daughter's apartment, it was bare. Swango had taken everything. Sharon was left with virtually nothing to remember her daughter by, except her photographs and a lock of Kristen's hair. And Swango had placed scores of long-distance telephone calls from Kristen's apartment, including the lengthy call to Vern Cook, leaving the Coopers with an enormous bill. As they struggled to make sense of their daughter's death, the Coopers learned from Kristen's neighbor about her reaction to the phone call from Swango the night before her death. They speculated that something Swango had told her, that he was dating someone else or that he needed even more money, had brought Kristen to the breaking point. They also learned from Kristen's friends in Sioux Falls that she had been seeing Carol Carlson, the counselor, and they spoke to her about what might have been troubling Kristen. Carlson was no doubt guarded out of professional responsibility. Still, she insisted that Swango wasn't to blame. "You know, Kristen could be manipulative, too," she said. "Michael was a wonderful person, and what the media were saying about him was entirely untrue." The Coopers also learned that Kristen had turned to a therapist the day she died. She had been to see her for the first time the day before and had come in the next day distraught.
"Nobody is coming for me," Kristen had repeated over and over. If she told the therapist anything about her last conversation with Michael, the therapist didn't share it with the Coopers.
By the time Kristen left her office on July 15, the therapist felt she was considerably calmer. "She had been devastated," she added, "by her new patient's death." Sharon despaired of ever understanding what had happened. All she knew is that she, too, now felt that life was hardly worth living. Baron Harris checked into the Northport Veterans Administration Medical Center on September 29, 1993, for what he and his wife, Elsie, expected would be relatively brief treatment for pneumonia. The 60-year-old Harris was otherwise in good health, and, when not working as a cabinet-maker, enjoyed spending time with his five children and two grandchildren. The couple had recently celebrated their 25th wedding anniversary. After a brief consultation with a respiratory specialist, Harris was assigned to a resident. When Elsie Harris arrived, she found the doctor sitting attentively near her husband's bed in the private room. He had blond hair, clear blue- He had blond hair, clear blue eyes, an athletic build, and a broad smile that Mrs. Harris found immediately reassuring. He introduced himself as Doctor Michael Kirk. Harris was impressed by the time and attention Doctor Kirk bestowed on her husband, behavior that contrasted with the harried indifference she'd seen in many other doctors. Several days later, when she arrived to discover that her husband's hands were tied to the bed rails, Doctor Kirk was reassuring. Her husband, he explained, had suddenly become agitated, and he had given him a sedative. Harris was now sleeping peacefully. The doctor had ordered several tests, something to do with Baron's liver, but it would be several days before they had any results. On her next visit, Mrs. Harris arrived to find that the blinds in her husband's room had been lowered and closed, darkening the room. Doctor Kirk was alone with her husband, and was in the process of injecting the contents of a large syringe into her husband's neck.
What's that? She asked.
Vitamins, Doctor Kirk replied. He removed the needle and left the room. Later, when a nurse arrived, Mrs. Harris mentioned that the doctor had given her husband a vitamin injection. You must be mistaken, the nurse said. Doctors don't give injections at all, that's the nurse's job. Baron Harris remained under what seemed heavy sedation. Still, when his wife introduced him to the nurse at the end of the week, he was able to smile and wave. Elsie Harris was wholly unprepared to find her husband unconscious and on a respirator the following Monday. I hope it's nothing I did, Doctor Kirk said.
What are you talking about? She asked.
He's in a coma, and I know he's not coming out of it, Kirk replied. Elsie Harris began to sob. Pressed by Doctor Kirk, who argued that her husband had already suffered irreparable brain damage, she agreed to a D N R order, do not resuscitate. Despite her anxiety and grief, Mrs. Harris was struck by the change she perceived in Doctor Kirk. His solicitous concern for her husband had evaporated. His manner seemed cold, detached. Sharon Cooper knew only vaguely that Swango was working as a doctor somewhere in New York. But then she received a letter from him. I think of you so much, Swango wrote. I know Kristen wanted us to stay in touch. I can feel Kristen sitting by me. She taught me to have a better bedside manner. Sharon wasn't interested in corresponding or otherwise staying in touch with Swango. But she noticed he had written his address on Long Island at the bottom of the letter. She wrote back, saying she didn't think it was a good thing for them to stay in close contact. You'd better let go of Kristen, she advised. But Sharon couldn't put Swango or his letter out of her mind. She knew he was working as a medical resident under false pretenses, that he hadn't told anyone he'd been convicted of a felony and had been in jail. No one would want to be treated by a doctor with such a record. She couldn't shake the feeling that he had been responsible, directly or indirectly, for her daughter's death. She had dedicated herself to taking care of sick people. If she did nothing now, she feared, more people, perhaps another vulnerable young woman like Kristen, might die. Should she contact the authorities? If so, who? She didn't know where to turn. Nor did she want to expose Kristen's death to more publicity and inquiries. It was all too painful. And she herself was afraid of Swango. She thought he would retaliate if he knew she had revealed his secret. She was in such turmoil that she was having trouble sleeping. Finally Sharon wrote a letter to one of Kristen's close friends in South Dakota, with whom she had been corresponding since Kristen's death. I was glad that Kristen was away from Michael, and I knew he couldn't hurt her anymore, she wrote. She is in a safe place. But I'm worried about who Michael is. He's gone to another residency in New York. Then she wrote Swango's full address. She thought of the letter as a silent plea. Every day she thought to herself, please God, let this message get through. Sharon was still so apprehensive that she told Al about the letter only after she'd mailed it. When she received the letter, Kristen's friend quickly realized its significance. She went to see the dean, Doctor Tally, and told him that Swango was practicing medicine again in New York. Doctor Tally happened to know the dean of the medical school at Stony Brook, Jordan Cohen. He called Cohen to alert him to the possibility that Swango had been accepted into the school's residency program. He told him of the experience in South Dakota, the justice file segment, and the ensuing uproar. When Cohen found that Swango had indeed begun his residency at Stony Brook, he called Fritz Hen, the department chairman, who in turn called Alan Miller, to tell him that the battery Swango had told him about with such seeming candor was in fact a case of poisoning. Miller was stunned. He reached Swango at the V A Hospital and said, I need to see you right away. Swango arrived in about fifteen minutes. I've just heard the following, Miller told him, then outlined the cases of poisoning and what he'd learned about South Dakota. Swango visibly blanched. He said, it's true. That's what they did convict me of. I didn't do it, but they convicted me. He seemed genuinely remorseful. I'm sorry, he said. I feel bad. But he said he had felt he had no alternative but to conceal the reason for his conviction. Miller had to agree that Swango was probably correct. It was one thing to hire someone convicted of battery after a barroom brawl, but Stony Brook would never have taken such a risk with someone convicted of poisoning people. Miller told Swango that his residency was suspended effective immediately. Miller was upset, castigating himself for not having checked out Swango more thoroughly. He called Swango's references again, in the wake of the disclosure, trying to figure out whether he had missed something. To his amazement, one reference reiterated his belief that the whole thing had been blown out of proportion and that Swango was innocent. The next day Swango asked to see Miller again. He repeated how sorry he was. What can I ever do with my life? He asked, seeming near despair. It's doubtful you can ever practice medicine, Miller replied. But then, moved by Swango's seeming contrition, he qualified his remark. Almost in spite of himself, he found himself feeling sorry for Swango. He seemed so sincere and heartbroken. The only way would be for you to go somewhere that really needed a doctor, somewhere that was desperate, Miller said, thinking that Swango might go abroad. And they would have to know everything. Swango had tears in his eyes as he left the meeting. If he was acting, it seemed to fool Miller, despite his skills as a psychiatrist. That day the V A also automatically suspended Swango's hospital privileges and ordered him out of his quarters. It dispatched its resident investigator, Thomas Valerie, a former Securities and Exchange Commission enforcement investigator to oversee the removal of his belongings. Valerie watched as Swango backed up his red pickup to the storage room and loaded his things, mostly books, into the back of the truck. Then he was gone. That same day, October twentieth nineteen ninety-three, the electrifying news broke in Newsday, which devoted its entire tabloid front page to the story. Poison in his past. Hospital fires M D after learning he fed ant killer to paramedics. A young doctor sent to prison for feeding ant poison to six paramedics in Illinois and investigated by authorities for suspicious patient deaths in Ohio was hired at University Hospital at Stony Brook, where officials now say he lied about his criminal past. The story began. He didn't tell anyone he was put in jail for poisoning anyone, said hospital spokeswoman Michael Gold. We just found out a little while ago he falsified documents and lied to us through his teeth. When Elsie Harris arrived at the hospital that day to see her comatose husband, she asked for Doctor Kirk. Have you read the papers? I'd advise you to go home and read them, a nurse said cryptically. Harris got a copy of Newsday. She burst into tears when she saw Swango Kirk's picture. Her daughter joined her, read the article too, and cried. They drove back to the hospital and demanded an explanation, but none was offered. Then it seemed all the doctors in the intensive care unit were rotated. The new doctors knew nothing about Swango or what had happened to Baron Harris. Finally Harris did get to speak to the doctor in charge of the I C U, but all he told her was that Swango had nothing to do with her husband's condition, and that it was unlikely he'd ever recover. Harris was shocked and grief-stricken. Baron Harris never regained consciousness and died on November eighth. The cause of death was listed as cardiopulmonary failure, secondary to encephalitis. As at Ohio State and in South Dakota, university and hospital officials rushed to reassure the public that whatever Swango's past record, nothing untoward had happened at their hospital. Only a week after Swango was suspended, V A Chief of Staff Thomas Horvath announced at a press conference that investigators were still going through records of the one hundred forty-seven patients known to have been treated by Swango, but that the inquiry so far had revealed no suspicious illnesses or deaths. He emphasized that the rate of complications did not change during Swango's tenure, and insisted that, as a first-year resident, he had no independent patient responsibilities. Even though Swango had in fact been alone with Buffolino and Harris, and had had ample opportunity to inject others. Medical school dean Jordan Cohen issued a statement saying that, we are also mindful of the natural concern the public has expressed about whether Swango had caused any harm to patients or staff while he was in our employ. Cohen emphasized that Swango's patient care activities were closely and contemporaneously supervised by the teaching attending staff, that the V A's quality assurance system uncovered no untoward events, and that a subsequent review of every patient's chart had thus far revealed nothing that would lead us to conclude that any patient was harmed. Cohen later said, there were some deaths, which is not unusual. Those were of particular concern, nonetheless. We looked carefully, scrutinized. There was no indication that there had been any unnatural events. That came as something of a relief. There was some accountability imposed on the medical school, however, as there had not been in Ohio or South Dakota. Several days after Swango was suspended, Dean Cohen called Miller. Alan, he began, which Miller thought was presumptuous since the two barely knew each other. I think it would be best if you resign as chairman of the admissions committee. That's fine with me, Miller replied. He pointed out that, given his part-time status, he was bound to have to leave sooner or later. The school needed a full-time admissions director. I'm going to have to make a statement to the press, Cohen continued. And Miller recognized with some bitterness that he was going to be made the fall guy. Cohen announced Miller's resignation on October twenty-sixth. In his prepared statement, he said, during all the years of our medical program here at Stony Brook, we have never encountered a case like Michael Swango. We believe that evidence shows that we are dealing here, at a minimum, with a pathological liar. Nonetheless, he went on, we have determined that a critical error in judgment was made during the interview and selection process, a process supervised personally by Doctor Alan Miller. In recognition of the serious, albeit unprecedented lapse on Doctor Miller's part, he has resigned his duties as program director. Cohen later explained, I felt the deviation from standard procedures was so egregious that there had to be accountability for that. It was a very unfortunate circumstance, but he was responsible for the quality control process, and I felt it was essential that there be public accountability. Then, only two weeks later, Cohen himself resigned. Before he left, he faxed a letter about Swango to the dean of every medical school in the country. Cohen wrote, in reviewing our records, I was chagrined to find that Swango had again conned very experienced faculty with outright lies about his past. He is an exceedingly charming young man, who can weave a very convincing story that elicits sympathy and compassion. I bring this matter to your attention because I think we may assume that he will try yet again to secure a residency position of some kind, somewhere. During the week after the news broke, Swango was seen several times in the Stony Brook area driving his red pickup. A group of nurses, one of whom he had begun dating even before Kristen's death, held a going-away party for him. It was only then that F B I agents began to look for him. Though the police had been notified of Swango's presence on October nineteenth, a squabble over whether the Justice Department or the Veterans Administration would be in charge of any investigation had wasted valuable time. Finally, the Justice Department took charge, but by the time the agents arrived, Swango had emptied his storage locker. It didn't occur to anyone to issue a warrant for his arrest on charges that he had defrauded SUNY and the V A by making false statements in his application, which is a federal offense. In any event, Swango himself was gone. After the news broke on Long Island, the Daily Press in Newport News ran a brief article on Swango's unmasking and his earlier conviction on poison charges. The Coopers had to read it several times before it fully sank in. Poison? They had never heard anything about a poisoning conviction. Oh my God, Sharon exclaimed repeatedly. It's real. Her worst fears were being borne out. Al called the Daily Press reporter, who knew little more about the case, and suggested he check at a local library for access to articles that had run in Illinois and Ohio. The next day the Coopers traveled to the College of William and Mary Library in nearby Williamsburg, which was able to provide copies of many of the articles on Swango. When she read them, Sharon felt as though she might faint. The Newport News article mentioned that Swango had disappeared. So Al called the Norfolk office of the F B I. I might have information on the whereabouts of Michael Swango, he told an agent. Ed Schrader returned the call and came to see the Coopers. He said the F B I was trying to develop a profile of Swango, and the Coopers answered his questions as best they could. Al told them that they suspected Swango would try to stay with Bert Gee, who lived outside Atlanta and had been so friendly with Swango at Kristen's funeral. Soon after, Schrader called to thank the Coopers, and said the F B I had discovered a storage shed in Portsmouth rented by Swango and would like to examine the contents. Absent an arrest warrant or probable cause for a search warrant, the F B I needed the Coopers' help. The Coopers went to the police and explained how Swango had taken all of Kristen's belongings, which they suspected were in the shed. But the police said they couldn't do anything, given Kristen's note bequeathing all of her possessions to him. Then the F B I asked the Coopers to file a civil lawsuit alleging that Swango had wrongfully taken their daughter's things. But Sharon refused. Kristen's note had said she wanted Swango to have all her things, and she felt that a suit maintaining otherwise would require her to make a false statement under oath. However, Schrader assured the Coopers that the F B I had the shed under surveillance, and that the storage facility's owner had pledged to notify them should Swango try to remove anything. Months later, the agent called to report that Swango's red truck had been spotted in Bert Gee's driveway, and the F B I had him under surveillance. In fact, Swango was living with Gee, and on February twenty-fourth nineteen ninety-four, had taken a job as a chemist at a company called Photo Circuits in Peachtree City just outside Atlanta. Photo Circuits makes computer equipment. But significantly Swango, using the alias Jack Kirk, was working in its wastewater treatment facility, which feeds directly into the metropolitan Atlanta water supply. Given Swango's fascination with mass tragedy, and the books he had checked out of the Quincy Library, including the one about poisoning a city's food supply, his new employment alarmed the F B I. Acting on the Bureau's tip, Photo Circuits fired Swango on July twenty-second, on the grounds that he had lied on his job application. The action apparently alerted Swango that he was under surveillance. He and his truck disappeared, and Schrader had to call the Coopers to report that the F B I had lost track of him. In November, a friend of Kristen's from her time in Florida, Tracy Dunlap, got a call from Swango, saying he was in Georgia but wanted to come to Florida for a visit. Dunlap was still working as a nurse in Naples. She'd never met Kristen's fiance, but Kristen had spoken about him occasionally, never mentioning anything about his past or the troubles in South Dakota. Swango had called Dunlap several times after Kristen's death, complaining that the Coopers weren't being very supportive, and that he needed someone to talk to. The next day, when Dunlap got home after work, her answering machine was full of messages from Swango, calling from a payphone in Naples. When she called the phone, Swango answered, saying he'd been waiting there all day. He wanted to come over immediately. Somewhat apprehensively, Dunlap agreed. Thinking it odd that Swango would have come to Florida so quickly and sat all day by a payphone, Dunlap called Al Cooper to ask what he thought of Swango. Why? Al asked. Dunlap said he'd shown up and wanted to stay with her. Dunlap said he'd shown up and wanted to stay with her. "Get rid of him," Al told her, though he wasn't more specific, because he didn't want to frighten her. Despite the warning, Dunlap and Swango sat up talking that night until three AM. He seemed so earnest and pleasant, and after all, he had been close to Kristen. "I felt so sorry for him," she later told the Coopers. The next day, Dunlap was moving into a house with two friends. Swango helped her move, volunteering his truck, and then he just stayed, sleeping on the pull-out sofa bed and using one closet for his belongings. What Dunlap and her roommates had expected would be a two- or three-day visit stretched into weeks. Swango was pleasant but increasingly odd. He was out most days, saying only that he was doing research at the library. He'd never joined them at the pool or hot tub. He refused to eat anything from the refrigerator or share a pizza, even when they offered, preferring to keep his food in his closet. Her roommates noticed that he kept numerous containers on the passenger side of his truck. Finally, Dunlap asked Swango when he planned to leave. "Well, I thought I'd stay," he replied, but Dunlap said that might be a problem for her roommates. Around Christmas, Dunlap spoke to Al Cooper again and told him Swango was living with her. This time, he all but ordered her to get Swango out of the house, but before she could say anything, she got a call from one of her roommates who was working as a nurse in Fort Myers. The roommate told her to drive over immediately. She had met two visiting nurses from Long Island, who told her about Swango and even showed her a picture that looked like their long-term guest. Dunlap and her roommate hurried to the Fort Myers Library, where they pulled up articles about Swango from Newsday. When she read them, Dunlap felt she might have a heart attack. Dunlap immediately called the FBI in Miami, but the agency spoke with expressed no interest in anyone named Swango. He suggested they call the local police. Dunlap concluded that would be a waste of time, since Swango hadn't done anything in Florida. In any event, they were worried about their other roommate, who was at home alone with Swango. They hurried back to Naples and told Swango he had to move out immediately. They showed him copies of the Newsday articles. "It's not true," he insisted, but he didn't argue further. He packed his belongings into the truck and left that night. The next day, an FBI agent appeared at the hospital where Dunlap worked, asking about Swango, but it was too late. Dunlap had no idea where he'd gone. Swango had driven back to Georgia and stayed with Bert Ghee. Three days later, at two AM, he and Ghee showed up at the storage locker in Portsmouth. The night manager, who knew nothing about Swango, let them in. Swango and Ghee loaded the truck and left. No one called the FBI. Only on October twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-four, a full year after his dismissal from SUNY Stony Brook, did federal authorities issue a warrant for Swango's arrest on charges of defrauding a federal facility, the VA Hospital, by gaining admission to the Stony Brook residency program on false pretenses. Because the FBI agents thought they were investigating a potential murder case, it hadn't occurred to them to seek a warrant for this far lesser offense until they took what evidence they had to the US Attorney's Office on Long Island. Swango was now officially a fugitive, but the action produced no new leads. Ed Schrader visited the Coopers with the disappointing news. "We've lost him," he said, attributing the delays and mishaps to squabbling within the FBI over who should be in charge of investigating the case. Schrader had checked with the FBI's Miami office, which confirmed that they had initially ignored the call from Tracy Dunlap. "Swango wasn't a priority," Schrader said, sounding bitter and disappointed. "If I were you, I'd forget about this," Schrader told the Coopers. "He's the kind of person who will just show up dead someday." For Swango had vanished. Chapter Ten By November nineteen ninety-four, spring had finally come to the tropical regions of southern Africa, bringing welcome rains that helped relieve the severe drought that had afflicted most of Zimbabwe for nearly three years. Dr. Christopher Zashiri, the director of the Manene Mission Hospital, was in good spirits, bounding out to greet the new doctor from America when he arrived with Howard Mpofu, the church official who had picked him up at the Buluayo Airport. Mpofu introduced him to Dr. Swango, whose blond hair and fair complexion reminded him of some of the Swedish missionary doctors who had come before. Zashiri noticed that Swango had something of a nervous twitch in his eye. Perhaps he wasn't used to the bright sunshine. Swango was charming and talkative, and they all chuckled over Mpofu's account of Swango kneeling to kiss the bishop's ring. Still, Zashiri was a bit skeptical of the mission hospital's good fortune. "Why are you coming from a rich country like the United States to the bush?" he asked as soon as Swango had deposited his belongings in his bungalow. "I love Africa," Swango replied. "I love blacks. I can breathe out here," he said, gesturing toward the sweeping rain-freshened view beyond the hospital. "Is that so?" Zashiri responded. "You'll be earning one-twentieth of what you could make in the US." "I don't mind," Swango replied. Zashiri wondered. It did seem odd to him that a young doctor from the United States would want to come to this remote African outpost. But Swango seemed so idealistic and earnest, Zashiri thought maybe he was becoming too cynical. Though Swango had been looking for a job through an agency called Options, a subsidiary of Project Concern International, which specializes in placing American doctors in foreign countries, he had been hired by the church directly through a Lutheran placement organization in Harare, which obtained a copy of his application from Options. Swango had supplied a copy of his medical school diploma, a glowing letter of recommendation from Robert Haller II, who had hired Swango as an emergency room physician in Ohio ten years before, and testified it at his sentencing hearing in Quincy, and a letter from Diane Weaver, a nurse who was married to a friend of Swango's from America Ambulance in Springfield. Both letters were dated nineteen ninety-four. The dates must have been altered, since Haller and Weaver hadn't written letters for Swango since his sentencing in nineteen eighty-five. Swango also rewrote the text of Haller's recommendation, making it far more positive than the original. The new doctor didn't quite prove to be the godsend Zashiri had hoped for. He seemed curiously inexperienced, considering that he had graduated from medical school in nineteen eighty-three, and according to his resume, had been practicing medicine in the United States since then. Despite his impressive academic credentials and his internship at Ohio State, a name recognized even in southern Africa, Zashiri discovered that Swango had trouble with routine surgery, and seemed never to have delivered a baby. But Swango ascribed his lack of experience to his specialization in neurosurgery, a skill for which there was little demand in Manene, and Zashiri had indeed heard that American doctors were highly specialized. In any event, Swango readily agreed to undergo a five-month internship at Mpilo Hospital in Buluayo to improve his skills, concentrating on obstetrics and gynecology. Mpilo Hospital is a teeming facility on the outskirts of Buluayo. It is still referred to as the African Hospital, as opposed to the United Buluayo Hospitals, which, before Zimbabwean independence, were for white patients only. Though differences between the hospitals have supposedly been leveled, Mpilo patients remain overwhelmingly black and poor. The hospital has been inundated with AIDS patients, and, at the time of Swango's arrival, was woefully understaffed. There were only three residents working at the hospital, rather than the usual six, which meant that one of them was on duty for a twenty-four-hour period every third night. Swango's arrival provided welcome relief. Swango impressed the superintendent at Mpilo, Dr. Nabot Chaiwa, as sociable and eager to learn. He was assigned to work under Dr. Christopher King in obstetrics. Soon after, at a lunch for the medical staff, Ian Lorimer introduced himself to Swango, who said his name was pronounced Swan. Lorimer, tall, good-looking, and athletic, was a resident in surgery, and Swango said he was eager to improve his surgical skills. He asked if he could accompany Lorimer on his rounds. Affable and outgoing, Lorimer welcomed the company. He was amazed to find that Swango had the stamina to accompany him on his twenty-four-hour shifts, then continue immediately with his own rotation. Swango was never anything but helpful, attentive, and eager to learn, and quickly won over almost everyone on the medical staff. The one exception was Dr. Abdi Mezba, who was almost instantly suspicious of Swango. In Iranian national, Mezba criticized Swango's skills as a doctor, puzzled over the vague references to his past, and concluded that Swango must be a CIA agent. But other doctors attributed Mezba's suspicions to his open anti-Americanism, and dismissed his spy theories as far-fetched. Lorimer was impressed by Swango's general medical knowledge and his ability to handle trauma cases. "The result," Swango told him, "of his having successfully completed an intensive advanced trauma life support course." He made no mention of his work in emergency rooms or as a paramedic. On the other hand, Swango seemed woefully inexperienced in even rudimentary surgical procedures, such as draining and abscess. Lorimer didn't feel he could allow Swango to undertake common but more complex operations, such as hernias and appendectomies. Still, he felt his new colleague was learning quickly. Lorimer's only real concern, and a minor one in the scheme of things, was the frequency with which Swango swore, or, as Lorimer put it, blasphemed. Lorimer and his wife Cheryl, a former ballet dancer, are devout Presbyterians, and led a weekly Bible discussion and prayer group at Buluayo's Central Presbyterian Church. When Lorimer asked Swango to watch his language, Swango seemed startled that he might have offended, and never again took the Lord's name in vain in Lorimer's presence. Indeed, Swango seemed so chastened that Lorimer invited him to join them at church on Sundays, and he was soon a fixture in the congregation. Along with the Anglican Cathedral, Buluayo's Central Presbyterian Church is a pillar of the local establishment, numbering prominent businessmen, lawyers, and doctors, including Dr. King from Mpilo among its members. Swango and Lorimer became close friends, and not just because Lorimer was becoming Swango's spiritual mentor. In the long stretches of time they spent together at the hospital, they spoke often, in Swango's case incessantly, about books, about current affairs, about personal relationships, especially Swango's eagerness to meet a girl and eventually to marry. Lorimer was amazed by how well-read Swango was, not just in popular bestsellers and detective stories, which Swango loved, but in the classics, All of Dickens, Jane Austen, Tolstoy. He often referred to Dostoevsky's Crime and Punishment. The medical staff, some of whom felt derelict in their own attention to matters outside their field, came to rely on his trenchant analyses of current events. On one occasion, Swango expounded at length on the conflict in Bosnia, showing, in Lorimer's view, an amazing command of detail and ability to make sense out of a bafflingly complex matter. Indeed, if there was anything slightly irritating about Swango, it was that he never seemed to stop talking. He sometimes followed Lorimer into the men's room so as not to interrupt a train of thought. As the two became close, Lorimer, twenty-seven, naturally talked about his upbringing. His father was Irish. He'd been born in Zambia but moved to Zimbabwe when he was two, had grown up in Harare, the capital, and had graduated from medical school there. For his part, Swango said he too was twenty-seven years old. In reality, he was now forty. His father had been in the military, was a strict disciplinarian, and was absent from home for long stretches. "It was his mother," Swango said, "who held the family together." He mentioned a couple of brothers, but Lorimer had the impression that Swango hadn't been in contact with them or with his mother in some time. But Swango didn't seem to want to discuss his past. He was vague about just where he was from, where the family had lived, where he was educated or had worked in the United States. Lying about his age no doubt made it easier to gloss over his past. Lorimer didn't press, though he did ask what had brought a young doctor like Swango to Africa. Swango said he'd always wanted geographic variety in his career. He said he'd considered Latin America, the Caribbean, Asia, that Zimbabwe hadn't been on the list, but when the Manene opening was mentioned, it immediately appealed to him. In any event, no one in Buluayo was inclined to think ill of someone like Swango. The beleaguered white community there would no doubt have embraced any charming, handsome young white American doctor who had come to live in their midst. Depressed by years of emigration, the failure of white rule, and constant fear that their remaining status, privileges, economic security, and even physical safety could be shattered by dictatorial decree, most whites who met Swango were flattered that someone with his stellar credentials, someone who could seemingly live anywhere, not only chose to come to their community, but was constantly extolling its virtues. The friendliness of the people he met, the ideal climate, the satisfaction of working in a hospital where he was truly needed and could make a contribution. Swango not only attended the Presbyterian Church on Sundays, but also joined a weekly Bible study group led by Lorimer, and enrolled in a sixteen-week Christian marriage course, also taught by the Lorimers. He played volleyball every Thursday evening, usually at the home of Ted Myrtle and his wife Margaret, Cheryl Lorimer's parents, and played table tennis on Tuesday evenings in a league that met at the Catholic Church. He seemed eager to meet women and to have a girlfriend. He told friends of the Lorimers, "I really like that girl with the ginger hair," referring to Rosie Malcolm, who also attended the Bible study sessions. They jokingly told her to watch out for Swango unless she wanted a boyfriend, but he never directly asked her out on a date. In May nineteen ninety-five, when the internship ended and it came time to return to Manene, he told the Lorimers he wasn't all that excited about returning to such a remote location, but would honor his commitment. But he pledged to stay in touch and said he'd like to return permanently once he completed his stay at the Mission Hospital. Doctors King and Matt Oliver wrote him glowing letters of recommendation, with Oliver writing that he was very keen and hardworking. At Manene, Dr. Zashiri was happy to have Swango back, and felt that his performance had indeed improved as a result of his months at Mpilo. Swango's earlier enthusiasm and cheerful mood, however, seemed to have evaporated. Perhaps the stimulation of Buluayo had soured him on the isolation of the bush. It was in the month he returned, for example, that Swango asked for the use of a car, saying he wanted to attend medical conferences in Buluayo. While he remained affable and friendly towards Zashiri, his habits increasingly struck the doctors and others at the hospital as peculiar. Dr. Larson told Zashiri that something about Swango made him uneasy, and he didn't want his children to be around him. Although Swango had indicated he was something of a diet and fitness buff, Zashiri couldn't figure out what he was eating. He never cooked for himself, didn't eat with others, and seemed to live on popcorn and coke. There were also a few complaints from the nursing staff, nearly all of whom were black Lutheran nuns, that Swango was irritable and rude to them, in some cases refusing to allow them to accompany him on his rounds. This was highly unorthodox. It was hospital policy that a nurse always be present during doctors' rounds, to take down instructions for medications and to administer injections, for example. Swango seemed unduly sensitive about his lab coat. He once flew into a rage after accusing a nurse of touching it. There were even a few murmurings that Swango was a racist. All this was discounted by Zashiri. Still, that a nurse would mention another doctor to him at all, let alone to complain, was highly unusual. The nursing staff was deferential to a fault, and rarely spoke to medical doctors unless their opinions were solicited. And while Swango's long hours and frequent visits to patients seemed laudable, it did seem odd that some of those visits came in the middle of the night, and that Swango used unattended entrances to the wards. Nurses and aides would sometimes be startled to find Swango ministering to a patient when they weren't aware he was in the building. On May twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-five, little more than a week after his return from Buluayo, Swango came into Zashiri's office to report that one of his patients, Rhoda Malamvana, had suddenly collapsed and was dead. Swango had prepared a death certificate. Zashiri was startled. Swango had no real explanation for the sudden demise of his patient. Malamvana had been admitted to the hospital earlier that month, with burns over about twenty percent of her body, but she had responded well to treatment, and nothing about her condition seemed life-threatening. Still, death, even sudden and unexplained death, is a fact of life in hospitals. Zashiri accepted Swango's account and didn't make further inquiries. Then came the incident in which Swango awoke Keneus Msamzewa from his nap and injected him. Msamzewa was paralyzed, unable to speak, yet conscious. When he recovered sufficiently to tell nurses that Dr. Mike had given him an injection, Swango denied it. Swango denied it. Umsazewa was now terrified of Swango, and begged to be moved from the recovery room. He was afraid to be alone there. Initially, the nurses seemed to believe Swango's claim that Umsazewa must have been hallucinating when he accused him of giving him an injection, but Umsazewa proved surprisingly astute and resourceful at rebutting Swango's claim. He told the nurses that Swango had concealed the syringe in his jacket pocket, but that he dropped the needle cap. He retrieved the cap from the floor near the foot of his bed and turned it over to the nurses, pointing out that he had not been scheduled to receive any injections. How then could a needle cover have appeared near his bed unless Swango had dropped it, as Umsazewa claimed? Umsazewa's insistence that he had been fully conscious throughout the episode and was aware of Swango's actions began to make an impression on the nurses, especially after the mysterious death of Malamvana. They granted his request to rejoin the other patients, but the nurses were afraid to say anything to Zashiri or Larson. The situation was too serious, the accusation against Swango too grave, and they assumed the doctors would take Swango's word over theirs. In the wake of the incident, Umsazewa developed an infection in his lower leg. Two weeks later, the leg had to be amputated near the knee, surgery again performed by Dr. Larson. Umsazewa was convinced that Swango had caused him to lose his leg. He was so frightened by the prospect that Swango might have access to him that he again insisted he not be left alone during his recovery. Though the nursing staff began to keep a wary eye on Swango, there were no unusual incidents and speculation subsided. Then, in late June, two deaths in as many days shattered the calm. On the afternoon of June 26, Kataso Shava was recuperating from surgery on his leg when Swango arrived at his bedside. The doctor seemed annoyed to find Shava surrounded by relatives, his son, his sister, and his nieces and nephews, who were planning to spend the night at the hospital complex. Swango told them he needed to be alone with his patient and drew the curtain around Shava's bed. The family members left the ward but remained just outside the open door. Minutes later, as Shava's son later put it, "My father cried out like a wild animal. I never heard such a cry from a man." The family was alarmed but afraid to interrupt the doctor. Almost immediately, Swango hurried out, ignoring their questions. When they reached Shava's bedside, he was crying out, "We won't go home together because I'm going to die." When they asked him why, he replied, "The doctor has injected me with something, and I think I'm going to die." The family thought Shava was delirious, since he clutched his buttock and kept sobbing and repeating, "I won't get home, I'm going to die." He was still crying when the afternoon visiting hours ended and the family members were asked to leave the ward. When they returned that evening, a nurse told them that Shava was dead. Swango had signed the death certificate that afternoon, within hours of administering the shot. The family's complaints were dismissed, since Shava's records didn't indicate that there had been any injection. Later that night, at 2:30 a.m. on June 27, Swango, who was on call that night, woke Zashiri to report that Filimon Chapoko had suddenly died. Chapoko was a farmer who had been admitted in late April. His right foot had been amputated. He had been recovering, and in any event, sudden death in the wake of a foot amputation is highly unusual. Swango again signed the death certificate, citing cardiopulmonary arrest as the cause of death.
The Catherine Massey Book Club: Context of White Supremacy. All done with the first audio segment, we'll get to audio segment two once we discuss. I picked this book with zero thought about racism, white supremacy being directly discussed. I just thought, wow, wacky tale about this white dude, white serial killer, healthcare killer, pretending to be a doctor and killing all these folks, and then he goes to hide in Africa. Phew. Man. I don't even know what to say, man. What in the world? Uh, fiction? The number to dial is 605-313-5164. Code 564943. Pound, press star, six, one, if you would like to participate. We get blackmail privilege, Africa-style. Now that's two times. Now I said, why does this book start with a white man injecting an African male in the buttocks? Now we've got it twice. All of the people that have been poisoned and killed, I don't remember any other time where we're hearing directly, white man and stick 'em in the hind parts. And all of that, why? Two times, and specifically get to Africa now, particularly what I played today, ooh wee, the sexual gratification that he got from this. Why is this? You gotta, you could stick 'em anywhere if you're gonna kill 'em, why do you have to stick them in the hind parts? Why does the book start with that? Email is untiljustice@gmail.com. I will share one report, and then I'll get to one email, we'll get to the folks who dialed in as well. I pride myself on not being lazy, research, and we have our books here. Uh, when it's time to facilitate and host for the Catherine Massey Book Club, I don't just sit and watch documentaries, go do some research so we can speak in an intelligent manner about the book, right? And I try to do that every single book. Hopefully that's been on display for, what, over a decade of the book club, regardless of the type or subject matter. Same thing for Columbine, same thing for black, uh, men in Brazilian soccer, same thing for Swango. Now, the Argus Leader, that is the South Dakota newspaper, we had our caller in Iowa last week, uh, she was asking, now this is from the South Dakota newspaper, but still, letters to the editor, "Dr. Swango deserves better treatment." It was Mrs. Ken Nancy Childress Kirkvleit, K-E-R-K-V-L-I-E-T, Leit, maybe, Kirkvleit, who called in and stated her viewpoint in an Argus Leader poll about Dr. Michael Swango. Ooh, I might have to go get that. She is sister to Randy Childress, my husband, who was treated by Dr. Swango with the utmost care, concern, and professionalism. To all of you who have been so quick to judge Dr. Swango, I didn't realize so many people knew him personally. I'm happy for all of you that have never done anything in your past that you regret, are ashamed of, or are trying to make up for, especially Governor Mickelson, who wanted Swango fired immediate or, uh, terminated from the program, University of South Dakota, and an investigation immediately. Or for those few of you who have and still feel the need to judge Dr. Swango, did you do jail time to pay for your mistakes? I'm sure God is very concerned with all this competition. With three exclamation points, Mrs. Randy Childress Alford, Alverd, I think that's it? Alverd, that's it, A-L-V-O-R-D, Iowa, I bet that is a racially restricted region, Alverd, Man, this is the most, like, Sue Clebold overtones, and what I mean by that, remember all, that's where we got the peeing off the roof. It was all there but for the grace of God go I, Sister Sue. Boys will be, remember all of that? Who are you to sit and judge of this woman? Remember all that? What does it mean? This is a white man who is a convicted felon at the time this was written, like, what? What? If this was Jamal Leroy? Double O. Welsing, man? Francis tiptoeing round here, been accused of poisoning her white colleagues. Jail time, double O. Welsing, she hadn't been to jail and everything. You think white people would be right there? Don't you be bad-mouthing Francis Crest. Have you served time? Remove the plank from thine own. Ah, talking bad about Francis Crest, will she help, do you think, can you imagine a Okay, uh, let's see. Email number one, get these in as we proceed, untiljustice@gmail.com. Oh, wait a minute before I get to the email, should I get to them? Let me see. I'll give you one more, I did my research, I did my research. This is from the Newport News, uh, excuse me, well, it is the Newport News, I was correct. The paper actually is the Daily Press in Virginia. Coon Man Stand Up, Medical Doctor Coon Man Stand Up. Now, the report arsenic poisoning has many symptoms. Analysis of shaft of Kristen Kenny's blond angelic hair showed high level of toxic chemical. Kristen Kenny's health problems and depression during her final months were classic symptoms of chronic arsenic poisoning, says noted forensic pathologist Michael Baden, who investigated the Orenthal James Simpson case and testified. Laboratory analysis on the shafts of Kristen's hair revealed a high level of arsenic. The hair reflects what's going on in the rest of the body, said Baden, currently a forensic pathologist for the New York State Police. In large enough doses, arsenic kills. He also investigated the 22 caliber killer case, Joey 22, yikes. In smaller doses, it causes abdominal pain, nausea, diarrhea, vomiting, headaches, extreme weakness, and neurological damage. The federal government hired Baden to examine the test and test the remains of three of Swango's patients in New York, at least one in Ohio, and several in Africa. In each case, the patients died suddenly after coming into contact with Swango. Baden said tissue analyses of those patients showed a high concentration of epinephrine and succinylcholine. Both are common drugs administered at a hospital, but authorities say Swango used them in lethal doses. He used arsenic outside the hospital. Arsenic is a white odorless metal compound found naturally in water, soil, food, and yes, the human body, but in small amounts. The normal level of arsenic in human tissue is less than one-tenth part per million. We take in arsenic every day in our diets, Baden said. It's commonly found in fish and seafood. Baden said arsenic is a main ingredient in pesticides and herbicides. It can be easily mixed with sugar or other materials that would make it hard to detect, Baden said. Symptoms begin within 30 minutes of ingestion. They start with a metallic taste and a watery mouth, then lead to vomiting, cramps, diarrhea, sweating, and a garlic smell on the breath. Chronic arsenic poisoning can leave a person depressed or make a person more depressed, Baden said. The person taking the arsenic-poisoned food wouldn't be aware of it. Regardless of the method of exposure, the end result will be the same: death. Again, this is from the Daily Press in Virginia, November 20, phew, November 28, 2000, today is November 30, 2023, and this was from a whole week series that they did specifically on Kristen Kenny. I'm just including this for context since we're just heard about Kristen Kenny's death. Evidence, they do think that this was not a suicide, this was the result of Michael Swango poisoning her, and I don't know if that will be included in the book because this article was published after this book was published, so I don't know if it'll be updated or what have you, but I thought that was important enough that we should have that now, um, that, that's probably another, uh, what do they call it, notch you can put on the belt, isn't that how they do it for the white race soldiers in the West? Put another notch on his belt for Kristen Kenny's poisoning, and I wouldn't even have known that, that, wow, depression and all those mental health problems, that that can be the result of poisoning? Learn something about everything. Okay, okay. Let's see, I will, I'll double-check, see if folks have commentary and/or emails, let's see. I'll get their spec, if folks are spectating or take a moment to get their thoughts together, I'll read one email, then see if folks have additional comments to share, let's see. Email number one. Let's see. All right, email number one. Hi Gus, cows, audience, and callers, this book should be titled, Willful Negligence: Aiding and Abetting a Serial Killer, White Serial Killer. Number two, if Michael Swango had not murdered anyone and I had written this book as a work of fiction, I would expect an editor to tell me to do a rewrite as the story is unbelievable and far-fetched. That's why I keep saying, like, fiction? Are you serious? If John Grisham, if they presented a movie of all this, like, man, get out of here, that's, come on, come on. Number four, it's clear the various hospital administrations practiced racism in their hiring processes, but it was notable that the Asian foreign doctors were mentioned in last week's reading. Up until that point, there was mention of foreign doctors, but no reference to a specific country or region of the world. This leads me to think the foreign doctors referred to were black and from Africa or the Caribbean. In my opinion, the author was practicing racism. Black, get back. That certainly could be. You do have a lot, you know, those individuals here in this part of the world right now, individuals classified as black, but they were born outside the US, physicians, I could certainly be that, be in the case. Number five, they don't allow too many homegrown Negro doctors. Five, I had never heard of this case before or the name Swango, so I Googled the killer to see what he looked like. Initially, I thought he was non-white, black by the sound of the name, so I'm wondering how the hospital staff knew he was white from his job applications. I'm assuming he didn't attach a picture of himself, but people did do that in the past. Swango is German in origin. Hmm, I thought he was non-white, black by the sound, really? Michael Swango? Hmm. I don't, well, I guess, so if we're rewinding, how would they know this is a white person? If we're rewinding to the early 1980s, really even in now, but particularly we rewind to the early 1980s, white people weren't really allowing a whole lot of black people into med school, as is still the case now, and particularly since this is a male, oh, man, they really do not allow very many black males, so it would probably be kind of rare to have such a, and from his geographic locate, white people are not ignorant about racism, they could probably just look at his address and see that he's doing this from Quincy, Illinois, like, oh, okay, they don't even have that many black people there, and then to have this white dude with this science background, STEM, they don't have a whole lot of black STEM people even now, and all the rest of, like, yeah, this is, you know, this is not Leroy, come on in, Mike. Uh, let's see, uh, six, lost my place. Establishing a national database for doctors that are banned, etc., would be based in law, and all heads of hospitals would be notified of its existence in writing. The fact that hospital managers looked for loopholes not to report Swango is evidence of their culpability. Exactly, I think we heard that last week, uh, from Cook, who was saying, you know, make sure you don't work with children, Lord Jesus, they'll kill you. Don't tell, matter of fact, and don't tell me where you're going, because that way the police come, plausible deny, I don't know nothing, man, I ain't seen Michael in a long time, that type of a thing. Number seven, I'm surprised Kristen's mother didn't suspect she was being poisoned by Swango, given she was also a nurse. I don't, did you, I'm not a nurse, I don't have any medical knowledge, but I had no clue that poisoning could lead to that sort of deterioration in mental health and well-being. I would, I, I haven't, I just wouldn't know. Now, maybe as a nurse, healthcare practice- I would, I haven't, I just wouldn't know. Now, maybe as a nurse, healthcare practitioner, she should have known that information, but dang. And then too, like, really? Would you be thinking that if someone told you that they were, you know, having a headache or emotional or borrowed? You'd be think- that would be, that would come to your mind that they're being poisoned with arsenic? Like, dang, dang. I, maybe, maybe. Number eight, parents. If you leave your husband, wife, because he, she was violent towards you, don't send your children to live with them. A person that cannot control their emotions is likely to abuse your child. Excellent point. Nine, I enclose information on David Fuller, a hospital electrician who was sentenced for raping the dead bodies of over one hundred women and girls as young as nine. His crime spanned a fifteen-year period. Hospital protocols were not followed, which meant he had unaccompanied access to the mortuary at all hours of the night to commit his crimes. He made four hundred forty-four visits in one year, and he recorded himself, which is how his crimes were uncovered. Images were found on his computer after he was arrested for two separate murders. There has been an inquiry, but no one has resigned as yet. Hmm, white people don't get fired, they get transferred. I think we did hear about one resignation in this week's, you know, part of the text, but I mean, that's kind of uncommon, you know, text that we're reading here. Uh, much obliged. So that's, uh, email number one. I feel so, what shall I say? Cool. I got to say that two times. Cool for doing the re- three times. Cool for doing the research. Yum, yum. Cool for picking this book. Nice, nice. And then immediately thinking, dang. Isn't that wacky? This book starts with a white dude putting a needle in the rectum of a black dude? And now it's in there again. Double down. Why is, what, what? Is Gus going crazy just because of, you know, guests we had on the program yesterday? Have we talked about some of this content before? Or I don't know. What do we think? Uh, that and other thoughts on the book, folks who dialed in, if you have, uh, commentary thoughts to share, line should be open. Proceed.
Hey Gus. Let me just. Quiet, please. Uh, go ahead. You can go ahead. Wow, good to hear.
Greetings, Iri.
Good evening. Uh, I just caught up on the archives with the book. So I thought I would, I want to start by saying I definitely didn't want to, uh, participate if it was going to be about like Jeffrey Dahmer and, and Dylan and stuff, because that was doing something to my mind. But I was glad to hear, you know, that it wasn't like that. So I'm participating now. I'm caught up. I am caught up. Um, I think they started the book off with him victimizing a non-white person in order to add a perpetia, a turn early in the book after that. Because if you're, if a person, I suspect if a person is a white person reading that book and starting off, you know, with that, there probably is going to be an assumption that the good beginning of the book is going to be about him terrorizing throwaway people. But it doesn't happen that way, and it's a shock. And now I think that's a device to get white people, like, I, 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 I don't know exactly. It just, it just sounds and seems like some type of editorial type of literary trick that was decided, um, that I went in the room for, but I'm guessing. So that's my ability. Um, and, okay, so I can move on from that. Um, it also is reaffirming real quick, you know, the homo eroticism, the homosexuality of white supremacy. That's a, a so-called metaphor bedrock for them, you know? Um, they, they just love that stuff. So it's also revealing about the writer in turn of the book. Um, I asked a non-white person that grew up in Cairo, Illinois, and, and was an adult in Illinois during this time, well before I, if he heard of Dr. Swango, and he hadn't. And I was really shocked because this non-white person is also so-called black and, and a rapper, whole Indian, and has family in South Dakota. And he, I think he was there for a time, and he hadn't heard of this guy. And I was, I was very much surprised by that. Um, I heard someone saying the archives to have a medical ear and eyewitness. Yes, I agree with that. Make sure you have. I have invested in a recording device. Depending on the state you in, you either have to have one party or two-party consent. My recording device is connected to an AI transcriber. Whenever I go to the doctor now, I have it on because I've had blood specimens taken from me that mysteriously were not in the record and that nobody had any trace of it, along with other things that happened, like, I don't know, getting MRSA from the hospital and almost dying, uh, and not being told I had MRSA. So I agree with that. Now, what I just heard, when someone, if someone, I don't understand why the family didn't immediately report what they heard in the room and what their family member said. I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going home with you. I'm about to die. Then he cries the whole evening. You know what I'm saying? Like, nobody said anything. I just don't get that. And I think that, that for white people, I'm guessing they were white or whatever, but especially non-white people, we're in these positions where we don't understand how the human body works. We don't understand how the medical system works. And we also have this, it, this, um, this supplantation of trust for doctors because we don't know what they know. So, oh, you can't, you, 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 you tripping, you know? You don't know what you're talking about. You're not dying. You just, I know it's traumatic. You, you had your foot cut off, but you're not actually dying. Oh, he's just upset about that. Like, don't assume anything. I would think that there's enough lawsuits that have happened between, especially now, between the time that this white guy was doing what he was doing and now, for people to be like, you know what? Let me ask questions. Let me check out the hospital. Let me check out this doctor. Let me, you know, go on these accrediting or these license, these licensure websites to make sure that this person, you know, do as many of the checks as you can, also checking the court record, which is not hard to do. All you need is the first and last name, for the most part. You know what I'm saying? So you'll be able to see what division of court they were in, and if you really want to be nosy, go, go down to the courthouse and pull the bow. You know what I'm saying? But like, major surgeries, especially amputations, the way that they framed that in the book, like, it was a, it was a foot amputation, and generally, you know, normally that doesn't result in death. I question that because I just, it's a, it's a removal of a body part. So we talking about clotting, we talking about, uh, hemorrhaging possible. We talking about if, if, uh, like at the V eight, when they were messing up with they, cleaning their equipment, contamination, some of the devices used through the amputation. That's not, no, he just wrote that in a kind of, it was really casual how he phrased it. So especially, again, a person telling you after something's removed, and they're crying the whole time, I'm about to die. They, I was, I was shocked by it. Thank you. The last thing I'll say, because I don't want to hog the mic. I think that the other, aside from it being a systematic process of not believing subordinates, i.e. nurses and, and the people that are under nurses, you know, they're not registered. I can't remember what they are right now. Other than not believing them, I think the fact that they're also bringing up his looks and stuff, I'm gonna tie it in. His looks are being tied in so much because on a subconscious level, I think even white people understand you have white people, and then you have apex predator white people. So the nurses are seeing this man as the apex of their, their group, which are racist, you know, dominant society, and their understanding in an unspoken way, I'm not going to be believed. He is the archetype of white people. He could hurt me if he wanted to. Um, if he doesn't hurt me physically, he could hurt my career. Definitely, he is a white male. And so in turn, these white women are supporting the system. Again, you can't have a system without white women, but they know what they, they know what's going on. They're not ignorant of that, and that's why they're not saying anything as well. And it's not that he that good-looking, because I looked at him too. He looked like a grown Charlie Brown to me. But for them, that's, that's their archetype. And I'll mute my line.
Charlie Brown. Oh, they just had the Charlie Brown Christmas and everything. Uh, much obliged, Iri. Uh, before we nab victim in New Jersey, just with the last, and apologies in advance to all of the cows listeners in Zimbabwe. I'm gonna try and do my best with the names of the non-white victims, but man, my English is not that good. So I mean, oof, like, man, I'm gonna do my best, but I'm very retarded. So Khataso Shava, this is the patient who says, I'm, I'm not going home with you. We're not going home together. I'm gonna die. And clutched his buttock and kept sobbing and repeating, I won't get home. I'm going to die. Uh, I think it's so important, this is in Zimbabwe, uh, where this happened. The family, they said, they, in quotes, "The family was alarmed but afraid to interrupt the doctor." I had to change my highlighter color for that passage. And then it continues, "The family's complaints were dismissed since Shava's records didn't indicate that there had been any injections." This is a white doctor, really in the universe, but on the continent. This is just some Negro. I mean, believe you, a whole family of Negroes. So what? Believe you. And they even, they started all this. We say terrorism, white supremacy racism is terrorism. This is a white man in a white lab coat. They were afraid. And he was in the Marines, trained killer. They were afraid to challenge that white man. And I think that is very representative and logical for non-white people, especially if they're classified as black all throughout the known universe. But yeah, I think that those two portions important context for why the family's concerns, even they were afraid to make them to begin with, and then were dismissed, system of white supremacy, the white lab coat in Africa. Victim in New Jersey. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Yes, uh, sorry about that. I'm in the gym. I'm trying to do my part to stay away from, uh, white men in lab coats while I exercise. Um, hopefully I'm coming through clear. Um, to leave off with a last caller, left off with them constantly saying how handsome he is. I also, um, looked up his picture. I mean, you know, not, you know, not, not that handsome. I mean, I'm, I'm a heterosexual male, but you know, I have eyes. I mean, Madre's Elba, handsome. You know, Denzel Washington, handsome. I'll even give you, uh, a white dude. Brad Pitt, handsome. Swango, I mean, come on. And it's getting to the point where it's getting very disturbing to keep hearing them, um, express how handsome he is. Um, I noticed when he got to Africa, they said he was very rude to the black nurses, but was, but when he was in the States, he was real charming. And again, and handsome. Um, he seemed to get more bold and aggressive in Africa. I noticed that. Um, the lack of investigation, um, is jarring when he went to Africa. I mean, in the States and in Africa. But for this man to say that he's twenty and he's really forty, I mean, there was no investigation, none whatsoever. I mean, he, he showed his diploma. I mean, his, uh, you know, his, his graduation certificate. So he could have easily been investigated, you know, um, just, just the racism and that. You know, when you just, you know, we'll take anybody just to come help out with, um, the victims of racism, um, in Africa. Um, the Iranian, uh, doctor was suspicious, and they just kind of wrote him off as, um, anti-American, you know? You know, maybe he's an anti-Semite. Maybe he's even a radical. Um, man, so, so far, only, only, we only got resignation. So the, the white incompetence of these doctors who allowed Dr. Swango to terrorize people, and only thing they got was resignation, only thing we got was resignation. So these white men was able to resign. I'm assuming, um, collect a pension. Um, I'm, I'm assuming to still live a good life. Um, they wrote letters after the resignation to all other institutions around the country, and he was still able to, um, make it to Africa. You know, um, you know, warning about Dr. Swango. Aw, man, his wife, even on her deathbed, not, not, not to chuckle, but, you know, make sure Mike gets some money to hold him until July. I want Mike to have all my belongings, you know, um, wow. I, I, I mean, so I, I would assume that was just her deteriorating health, and she was just completely out of her mind towards, um, her last, her last days. Um, they said that he was hiding his food. So I guess, I guess Dr. Swango said, you're not going to get one over on me. You know, he's already aware what he's running around doing. So he's smart enough to protect, uh, his food. Um, I know victims who have filled out applications for blue collar, you know, I mean, fifteen dollar an hour jobs. And was hired and months later fired because they lied on the application and was later found out that they had a criminal record. For Dr. Swango, just to be just, you know, getting, I mean, you know, just being hired and rehired and rehired, and, and even, you know, jet setting from the States to Africa, you know, with, with, with his background. I mean, it, it's just, you know, it's, it's, it's just, um, jaw-jaw, jaw-dropping, um, to say the least. Um, this book is definitely, um, a good read. I'm enjoying it. And, um, wow, um, I'll, I'll have more to say towards the end.
Right on. Be safe, burn some calories, get strong in the gym. Um, said, not gonna pee in my seven. I'm gonna hide my food. I'm done. Woo, Lord, gee, that is true though, because a lot of times people that are engaged in that sort of mischief, they think that other people are going to be doing the same thing. So yeah, I'm peeing in people's sodas. Yeah. I can't live. Oh, that's a good point about him, uh, woo, making up the age difference as well. And, you know, I can be whatever age I want to. They won't know. Uh, B in Santa Rosa, did you have commentary to add?
Hey, good evening, everybody.
Hey, good evening, everybody. This book is insane. Um, I'm, I'm on a walk right now. My son's packing, so I'm going off the top of my head. But the first thing that popped in my head is, uh, the name of this book. I think they should change it. It's like, uh, "Liquids and Owls shit are incompetent. What does it mean to be white? The story of Michael Swango."
Is it possible that you could get, I didn't want to interrupt just so we can make it a little clearer. Is it possible that you can maybe speak up or turn the volume up on your receiver just a tad? That would be great. Use lots of black self-respect to really, uh, project your voice. Thank you so much. Just start over so we can make sure we hear you as best we can.
Now, how about this? Any better?
Yes, sir. Lots of black self-respect.
Oh, give me a second. All right. So, uh, the first thing is, uh, I'm, I'm on a walk, so I'm going off the top of my head of what I remembered. And, um, the first thing that pops in my head is, uh, the name of the book. They should change it to "Liquids and Owls shit are incompetent. What does it mean to be white? The story of Michael Swango." Um, the first thing I noticed was, uh, how they always talk about how great he is, but in the same sentence, they turn around and talk about how incompetent he was. Uh, another thing I noticed is that, is that how he got a job, uh, at a, um, at a water plant, and I was like, oh my gosh, people. Uh, and all the arson, I, I was worried about that. I thought he was gonna kill a whole bunch of people in Atlanta. He was gonna probably be part of one of those mass murder things that happened there. Um, another thing that stuck out to me was when he got to, uh, Africa, when he said, uh, "I love the blacks," I was like, oh, man, this is gonna go down. And, uh, the last thing that stood out to me was how Teddy got in, uh, someone touched his lab coat, his white coat, uh, I thought God complex. And, uh, that's all I have right now. I'll mute my line.
Much obliged, B in Santa Rosa. Um, yes, there could have been a lot of better titles. "What does it mean to be white?" A plethora of better titles, uh, for this here text. Uh, we can think of some other ones as we proceed towards the conclusion. Uh, if other folks have commentary, star six one, I'll get into a few of my thoughts before we get to the second installment. Man, I took so many notes, um, starting off. So I, we'd mentioned Cook before. He was the one last week who told Swango not to work with any children and to use your real name. He tells him this week, he's now got residency in New York, and Cook says, "F is, fuck is wrong with you, Mike? Why are you blind? That's not what I told you to do." And Swango says, "Man, you know, I gotta do what I gotta do, man. They weren't gonna hire me and, you know, it's gotta, ends justifies any, uh, means, man. Carpe diem." Does Cook immediately call the authorities, let them know this guy could be killing people? I mean, hey, man, that's what I think. Let's talk about ethics and morals. Like, he could be poisoning people. You're not gonna speak up and say anything? Uh, let's see. Carol, Carol Carlson, she was, uh, Kristen Kenny's counselor, I suspect, the white woman. Carlson was no doubt guarded, uh, out of professional responsibility. Still, she insisted that Swango wasn't to blame. You know, Kristen could be manipulative too, she said. Michael was a wonderful person, and what the media were saying about him was entirely untrue. What the world? How does he have such a gang of white people who are ready to defend him and just find him such a cool white man? I, again, I just cannot imagine if this was, man, white people don't talk this well about President Obama. To my knowledge, he hadn't killed anybody. He's not a felon. Uh, let's see. Baron Harris, I would love to know if this is a white person or a non-white person. Uh, after a brief consultation with a respiratory specialist, Harris, Harris was assigned to a resident. When Elsie Harris arrived, she found the doctor sitting attentively near her husband's bed. In the private room, he had blonde hair, clear blue eyes, an athletic build, and a broad smile. Isn't that almost homoerotic? Like, do you keep hearing those, "Oh, would like the date?" That's how they described him? Like, he was just so handsome, and that blonde hair and smooth white skin, and come on. And then it's Dr. Kirk. I think we had a listener before we said they think he's doing that because he's the captain. I'm in charge. I'm a white man. Let's get to killing. Several days later, when she arrived to discover that her husband's hands were tied to the bed rails. Sadist, isn't that like the BDSM, what they call it, bondage? Sadism tying up and all that. Getting some, you heard that in the documentary, get some sort of sexual gratification out of all this? Dr. Kirk was reassuring her, her husband, he explained that suddenly become agitated and he had been given a sedative. Harris was now sleeping peacefully. The doctor had ordered several tests, something to do with Baron's liver, but it would be several days before they had any results. Now the room is dark. Dr. Kirk was alone with her husband and was in the process of injecting contents of a large syringe into her husband's neck, vitamins. Like, what? And they even say, "You must be mistaken, the nurse said. Doctors don't give injections." You keep hearing this over and over where protocols are not being followed, and people who know the protocol. And they, "Nope, that's not what we do. Nope, we don't do that. Nope, we don't do that." Said that before when we got, "Man, maybe he's killing people." He's, people are saying they're seeing him, seeing him give injections. Doctors don't do this. All of this, you know, repeated instances of white people not following protocol, but that doesn't send up a red flag frequently. They don't go report this. Who are the rules for? Not for white people. He even comes back. He tells after Baron Harris, now he's in a coma and all this, he says, "I hope it's nothing I did." See, they like that dry snitch on themselves. They'd said that repeatedly where he's snickering and looking like he's got his hand stuck in the cookie jar metaphor, just, "Hee, hee, 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 hee. I've tricked them all and they don't even know I'm the captain." What does it mean to be white? And the, see, that's the same thing with racism. It's not just the mistreatment, but fooling people in the process. I've mistreated them and they don't even know. Uh, let's see. And then he gets the do not resuscitate, uh, gets her to sign when she's vulnerable. That's what we talked about. Make sure you can get someone, uh, with you at the hospital, or maybe many folks, so that you can have other folks who are there, who kind of have their wits, where they can ask questions. And wait a minute, do not resuscitate. Why are we signing this? What do we need this for? What? Wait a minute, don't sign that, just all of that. Let's pause. Wait a minute, let's think through this. Whoa. This happening kind of wrecked. We have some time, even that. Full of other, can we have 30 minutes to think about this or an hour? Thank you. Alone, please. Thank you. And then we'll, you know, discuss it amongst ourselves. Uh, let's see. Now with Sharon and Al, these are Kristen Kenny's white parents in, uh, Virginia, uh, says, after Kristen Kenny has died, Sharon says she dedicated herself to taking care of sick people. If she didn't, if she did nothing now, she feared more people, perhaps another vulnerable young woman like Kristen might die. Should she contact the authorities? If so, who? She didn't know where to turn, nor did she want to expose Kristen's death to more publicity and inquiries. It was all too painful, and she herself was afraid of Swango. Now, we've heard this repeatedly where even other white people are afraid of this too. Like, what in the world? That, and then even here too, I would think like, you know, she's got suspicions about him. She thinks something up. Maybe she, you know, earnestly just didn't put it together that, you know, he could have poisoned her, and maybe that's what was responsible for all this, because this would have seemed like a moment where she could have, you know, "I bet he poisoned her." That's what I, you know, she, she doesn't even, doesn't even seem like she expressed that in the letter that she wrote. Uh, let's see. Uh, so she writes the letter to Kristen's friend in South Dakota, sends it off. Uh, the friend, she went to see the dean at the University of South Dakota, Dr. Tally, and told him that Swango was practicing medicine again in New York. Dr. Tally happened to know the dean of the medical school at Stony Brook, Jordan Cohen. Now, again, all of this cronyism where these white people network, we heard this at Ohio State, where they got homies that are politicians and bankers and pharmaceuticals, and then in other states and all of that. Broad network, that's how all of this works. Lots of cronyism. Uh, Cohen called, uh, he called Cohen to, or Dr. Tally called Cohen to alert him to the possibility that Swango had been accepted into the school's residency program. He told him of the experience in South Dakota, the justice file segment, and the ensuing uproar. It's also, I think, funny that in this time period, you couldn't just say, hey, uh, go to YouTube and put in Swango, and the justice file is up there. Yeah, just watch. Like, you could even send them the link with the exact timestamp and all that. Yesteryear when you had to have a VHS. Importantly, Swango arrived in about 15 minutes in front of, uh, Cohen. I've just heard the following, or excuse me, this is, uh, Miller, still at Stony Brook. Uh, he told him, then outlined the case of poisoning and what he learned about South Dakota. Swango visibly blanched. Blanch, verb, make white or pale by extracting color. The cold light blanched her face. Second definition, flinch or grow pale from shock, fear, or a similar emotion. Many people blanch at the suggestion. Their faces blanched with fear of white genetic annihilation. Uh, one, I don't think too many people that are the complexion of Dick Gregory or even Dr. Welzing, blanch on a regular basis. I think it is just a small percentage of the population would lose color as a result of fear or shock. In this case, the revelation of truth caused, caused Swango to blanch. Uh, he says, Swango says, "I'm, I'm sorry, and I'm remorseful. I feel bad." But he said he felt he had no alternative but to conceal the reason for his conviction. Miller had to agree that Swango was probably correct. And then we get, "Uh, it's doubtful you can ever practice medicine," Miller replied. But then moved by Swango's swimming, seeming contrition, he qualified his remark. Almost in spite of himself, he found himself feeling sorry for Swango. He seemed so sincere and heartbroken. The only way would be for you to go somewhere that really needed a doctor, somewhere that was desperate. Miller said, thinking that Swango might go abroad, and they would have to know everything. Swango had tears in his eyes as he left the meeting. If he was acting, it seemed to fool Miller despite his skills as a psychiatrist. Are you out of your flipping mind? How sympathetic are you to niggers? If this had been Leroy, same scenario, you'd have been, "Man, he was so earnest, and oh, I just feel so bad for him." And hey, hey, look at here, why don't you go, even that, you helping the plan, even that. Why are you sending this poisoner, felon, convict, liar? Why are you sending him to the people who need the most help? They don't get the best doctors. The Harvard's are da, na, 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 na. You know, we got any convict, felon, serial killer, yes, send them to the niggers on the continent, yes. The motherland. Uh, let's see. The papers, I just, it's so much more I could, I cannot believe that we picked this book. Uh, they repeatedly, in this era, you couldn't just go on your phone willy-nilly and get Wi-Fi and read this and look up that and search this. Couldn't do all of that. Repeatedly, you hear people saying, "Go get the newspaper, go get the newspaper, let's go to the library, let's go to the newspaper." Read the news. Now, you can read it, you can listen to it, you can watch, but you should be informed, and I said, make a project. Do what they did. Go to the library, have at least one subject. Search your local library, search the local news archives, pick another state, something. Be accustomed to researching. You heard multiple people say, "Did you read the paper today?" I said, "No, I don't even..." Oh, my God, you got to go read the paper. Michael Swango's on the front page. Even with this, like I said, New York State, South Dakota, Illinois, Virginia, Zimbabwe. Check the local papers in all of these areas because they have lots of fascinating details on this case and white supremacy racism. In fact, in Stony Brook, they have lots of, they have an article about Swango. It's titled, "Could Osama bin Laden be accepted to SUNY Stony Books, Stony Brook's medical program?" This is almost a decade before 9/11. In a separate installment, the, I think it's the Statesman is the SUNY Stony Brook paper. They have a whole page with a quote from Dr. Francis Cress Welzing. I'll share if we have time. Check the papers, researching, reading, more important than watching TV, although Swango was on TV a lot. Uh, we will get to the second installment. If you have additional thoughts, jot them down. We should have ample time. Once we are done, continuing with James B. Stewart's Blind Eye, Catherine Massey Book Club, Context of White Supremacy.
Chipoco's wife, Udzirai, had come to the hospital to visit her husband, and because the distance from their homestead was so great, had been sleeping that night on a bench next to her husband's bed, located in the same private ward where Mzanzewa had been recovering. Despite his recent amputation, Chipoco had been cheerful and looking forward to his discharge from the hospital. Husband and wife had been discussing plans for their farm plot and the work that would need to be done when he returned. Udzirai later told the nurses that she had been awakened at around 11:00 PM by the sound of the door opening, and saw that Dr. Mike, whom she'd met earlier that day, was entering. The doctor went straight to her husband, saying nothing to her, and she saw him bend over Philammon. She was overcome with drowsiness and must have fallen back asleep, for the next thing she remembered was the sound of the door as the doctor left the room. She wasn't sure how much time had elapsed and thought little of the incident. She assumed Swango was simply being attentive to her husband. Sometime later, she was awakened by the touch of a nurse's aid. "Did anyone tell you that your husband is dead?" the aide asked. Shocked, Udzirai turned to Philammon's motionless body and broke into sobs. To have two deaths in such a short space was unprecedented at Menene. Zashiri was alarmed, though nothing yet led him to consider that Swango might somehow be responsible. In early July, a maternity patient, Virginia Subanda, began experiencing what she thought were labor contractions, and was moved into the labor ward in anticipation of the birth of her child. Nurses kept an eye on her for two days, and then, on the morning of July 7th, as the contractions intensified, told her that they would have a doctor check her progress, since they expected the baby to be born soon. Dr. Mike soon arrived, along with a nurse. He examined Subanda briefly, noting that she was dilating normally. He smiled and reassured her, saying he anticipated no complications. Not long after, the nurse called Swango back to the labor ward to check on a newborn baby who, with its mother, was sharing the room with Subanda. Subanda didn't pay much attention, but when Swango finished with whatever he was doing to his other patient, he approached her bedside, leaving the nurse with the baby he'd just examined. Without offering any explanation, he began to reexamine Subanda. She felt his right hand probing her womb and vagina. At the same time, she noticed that he was groping for something with his left hand, either in a t-shirt pocket or an inside pocket of his medical coat. What she thought was odd was that he wasn't looking at her or the pocket. His head was twisted so that he could see the nurse across the room. He began withdrawing a syringe from inside his jacket, but when the nurse looked toward him, he quickly put it back, as though trying to conceal it. Subanda watched as Swango moved to a cupboard, withdrew a syringe, filled it from a plastic bag of sugar solution hanging from the wall, then placed it in the outer pocket of his coat. Subanda noticed that the syringe filled with the sugar solution had a green cap over the needle. Swango spoke briefly to the nurse, then returned to Subanda's bedside. Swango again removed a syringe from inside his coat, not the green-topped syringe Subanda had just seen him fill, and turned his back to the nurse. Subanda could see that this second syringe was filled with a pinkish liquid. Swango inserted the needle into the intravenous drip attached to Subanda's left arm. Then he called to the nurse, saying Subanda was ready to be moved into the surgical theater for delivery. for delivery. He made no entry in her chart indicating that any substance had been administered to her intravenously, and quickly left the ward without saying anything to Subanda or looking back. Within moments, Subanda began to feel violent abdominal pains. The baby began kicking and rocking within the womb. Subanda screamed. Then she began to feel as though she were on fire. She cried for water, asking that it be poured over her body. Nurses converged, covered her with cold, wet towels, and asked her what had happened. "Dr. Mike gave me an injection," she said, still gasping with pain. They quickly moved her to the surgical theater, where Swango was waiting. "What did you inject her with?" asked one of the nurses. Swango emphatically denied giving any injection, saying that Subanda must have been mistaken. He said he had simply flushed her intravenous tube with a sugar solution. Though Subanda felt too weak to push, the pain precipitated strong contractions. With the aid of the nurses, a baby girl was successfully delivered, and Subanda recovered. Word of the incident spread through much of the hospital, though no one mentioned it to Zashiri or Larson. Some patients now began saying they didn't want to be treated by Swango. One of them, Stephen Mugomere, who was suffering from venereal disease, demanded to be discharged, claiming he had suffered a painful reaction after an injection from Swango. His relatives tried to persuade him to stay. Among them was his niece, Edith Ingwena, a nurse's aide who worked with Swango. She was a staunch defender of him in the face of the rumors, which she attributed to some nurse's resentment over his treatment of them. But Mugomere was adamant. He left the hospital, and died shortly after returning home. Ingwena was among the mourners at her uncle's funeral. She herself had been feeling unwell for several days, nausea, vomiting, dizziness, and chills. And when she returned to work on the morning of July seventeenth, the day after the funeral, she told Swango that she wasn't feeling well. Swango suggested she lie down, and contacted Zashiri, saying she should be admitted as a patient. Zashiri, of course, knew Ingwena, and was concerned. And he and Swango discussed the symptoms, concluding that she was likely suffering from malaria, or possibly typhoid, even though malaria is rare during the winter months of July and August, and typhoid has largely been eradicated. As a precaution, Zashiri prescribed chloroquine and chloramphenicol. Swango reported that Ingwena was resting comfortably. He said she felt much better. At eleven twenty-five AM, Ingwena was pronounced "dead" by Swango. He completed the death certificate, citing the cause of death as pneumonia. Zashiri was dumbfounded. Swango was professionally detached from the other deaths, but he had worked closely with Ingwena, and to all appearances, had liked her. She had been his strongest defender within the nursing staff. He seemed genuinely upset by her sudden death. Still in mourning over Mugomere, who had left five children as orphans, Ingwena's family was distraught, and likely to be even more impoverished. They were wary of Swango, and upset when he said he wanted to attend the funeral. But then he bought them a coffin, and after attending the funeral, where he seemed genuinely bereaved, he bought groceries for everyone who attended. They were touched by these acts of kindness and generosity. When one of the relatives insisted that Swango be reported to the provincial medical authorities, or at least to the hospital director, the family overruled him, arguing that the deaths were likely caused by witchcraft, by some of the nurses. They argued that it was inconceivable that Swango would have done anything to harm Ingwena, when he was willing to buy her a coffin and attend the funeral. Two days later, Margaret Jo was treated by Swango after suffering an incomplete, spontaneous abortion. The patient, thirty-five years old, was otherwise healthy, and her condition was quickly stabilized with medication. That evening, Dr. Larson performed a routine evacuation of the remaining parts of the fetus, and reported that the operation had been a success. At seven-thirty the next morning, July twentieth, Jo was found dead. Alarmed, Dr. Zashiri immediately launched an inquiry, summoning members of the nursing staff to his office. They seemed terrified, but refused to tell him anything. Finally, a maternity nurse, Sister Gura Jaina, told him that she had been in the maternity ward when Virginia Subanda had cried for help, since the doctor had injected something. The doctor in question, she said, was Dr. Mike. Subanda was still in the hospital, and Zashiri went immediately to her bedside. Encouraged by the nurse, she told Zashiri what had happened, emphasizing that she had been injected not with a syringe containing sugar solution, but with a syringe that had been concealed in Swango's coat pocket. Then another nurse, Sister Ho, came forward, and said she believed that Dr. Mike had injected another patient while he was asleep, but that the doctor said the patient was hallucinating. She took Zashiri to Ms. Zewa's bedside, where Ms. Zewa narrated the incident, describing in detail how he'd been paralyzed after the injection by Swango, concluding, "I did not understand what happened later, but I nearly lost my life." He told Zashiri he was still frightened, and wanted to be moved to a different hospital. That afternoon, Zashiri had him transferred to the Mzume Mission Hospital. Dr. Zashiri had to face the possibility that a killer was at large in his hospital. "He panicked," as he later put it. The next day, PC Chikarisa, a superintendent in the Zimbabwe Republic Police, was summoned by the commander of the Midlands District to an emergency meeting in Zvi Shavane, the nearest town of any size to Manene. Zvi Shavane is a dusty place with an aging asbestos mine as the center of economic activity. The police station is a cluster of three tin-roofed, open-air buildings grouped around a small courtyard shaded by a jacaranda tree. When Chikarisa arrived, he met the Midlands Medical Director, Dr. Davis Delacama, Zashiri's superior in the Zimbabwean medical system, and the person ultimately responsible for hiring Swango. The day before, immediately after interviewing Ms. Zewa, Zashiri had called Howard Mpofu at Lutheran Church Headquarters in Buluwayo. Mpofu could hardly believe the reports he had heard from Zashiri about the nice young man he'd met at the airport, but he told him to call Dr. Delacama immediately. Whereas the US hospital system is decentralized, all medical doctors in Zimbabwe are paid by the state, and are indirectly accountable to the Minister of Health in Horare, who operates through the provincial medical directors such as Delacama. Thuswhile nominally an employee of the Lutheran Church, Swango was paid by the Zimbabwe government, and was accountable to Delacama. While shocked by Zashiri's revelations, and concerned that reports of Swango's activities might cause panic among patients, Delacama had concluded immediately that the police had to be notified and brought into the case. This was in sharp contrast to the approach adopted at Ohio State. It was also obvious to both Zashiri and Delacama that such a situation involving a white American doctor who might be murdering Zimbabweans was politically explosive, and could cost both men their jobs. At the meeting, Delacama looked grim. The medical director quickly briefed Chikarisa. A doctor at Manene Hospital, Dr. Swango, had allegedly caused a number of deaths through the administration of noxious substances or drugs. Since the doctor was an American, Delacama speculated that he might be using foreign drugs unfamiliar to the local doctors, and added that at the very least, there had been reports that he used unsterilized syringes. All the suspicious deaths had been certified by Dr. Swango. Delacama felt the police had to move quickly. There had been two deaths in the previous four days, and attempts had apparently been made on the lives of patients still in the hospital. Chikarisa applied immediately for a search warrant, which was granted by the police superintendent at about four PM. About an hour later, he, Delacama, and two police detectives reached Manene, where they met an obviously shaken Zashiri. Zashiri spent about fifteen minutes briefing them on his recent discoveries, then indicated that Swango was on duty in one of the wards. When the group arrived, Swango was chatting with a nurse, and looked relaxed. Zashiri called him aside, then led him outdoors, where he introduced him to the police officers and Dr. Delacama. Swango seemed calm, neither surprised nor alarmed, and suggested that the group join him in his bungalow next to the hospital. When they reached Swango's veranda, Chikarisa produced the search warrant, gave Swango a copy, and then, reading from the warrant, said that he and his colleagues were authorized "to look for and locate drugs and syringes that are in the possession of Dr. Swango and under his control, which are on reasonable ground to believe might afford evidence of the commission of the crime." When they entered, they found the house a mess, with Swango's few clothes strewn about along with some soiled lab coats. The bed was unmade. In the kitchen, they found evidence of the popcorns Zashiri had often smelled, and empty Coke cans. The detectives found several charts and X-rays, which they assumed pertain to Swango's patients, as well as a list of names on a chart from Impilo Hospital. But what immediately captured their attention was an extensive array of drugs and medical equipment. Several used syringes still contained fluids. Many of the substances were unfamiliar to Zashiri and Delacama. In any event, drugs were supposed to be stored in the hospital's dispensary, not in doctors' residences. Of the hundreds of medication containers in Swango's house, forty-six had been opened, indicating the possibility they had been administered to patients. Among them were adrenaline, ephedrine, valium, xyllocaine, neuper cocaine, all fatal if injected in sufficient doses, and potassium chloride, which is not only deadly, but virtually impossible to identify as a cause of death, since potassium levels are typically elevated post-mortem. As the detectives collected and inventoried the array of drugs, Chikarisa asked Swango if it were true that he had been injecting unauthorized drugs into patients, specifically Subanda and Ms. Zewa. In contrast to his earlier statement denying that he had injected Ms. Zewa at all, Swango said he had injected water into his intravenous tube in order to flush it, a routine procedure. He also acknowledged that he had on occasion used unsterilized needles, and had reused the same syringes. Chikarisa was offended by Swango's nonchalance, later characterizing him as boastful. He and the others were particularly offended by one of Swango's comments to the effect that, "As Africa was a jungle, syringes can be used repeatedly without harm." Swango added by way of example that in the Congo, injections were used again and again. At this point, Chikarisa warned Swango that anything he said might be used against him, a statement known in Zimbabwe as "a caution," the equivalent of the US Miranda warning, by which subjects are advised they have the right to remain silent. Swango said he would say nothing further until he consulted a lawyer. Dr. Delacama told Swango that his medical privileges would be suspended pending an investigation, and that he was not to enter any of the hospital wards. The next morning, Swango showed up at Zashiri's office. "What's happening?" Swango asked, obviously upset. "The staff is concerned about the sudden outbreak of unexplained deaths," Zashiri said. "People are against me," Swango countered. "They think I'm killing patients." Zashiri nodded, looking closely at Swango, since that was precisely what people were thinking. Swango looked very earnest, very grave. "It's not true," he said. Zashiri thought Swango seemed too sincere, almost as though he had rehearsed the line. Earlier perhaps, Zashiri might have believed him, but now, he did not. He told Swango the suspension would have to remain in effect, that the matter was out of his hands now that Delacama, the provincial medical director, was involved. Swango accepted the news quietly. Zashiri was relieved when Swango left the office. He was under the impression that most Americans carried guns, and he feared Swango might have one. During the next few days, Police Superintendent Chikarisa moved swiftly to interview the nurses and others at the hospital, including Subanda. He traveled to Mzume, where Ms. Zewa was under guard and in isolation. The accounts he heard left Chikarisa with little doubt that he was dealing with a killer. As he later put it, "They gave startling revelations of how the murders were committed, and how that he discovered the crimes." He had the remains of Margaret Jo, Swango's most recent victim at Manene, sent to Buluwayo, where a pathologist removed tissue samples from several organs and sent them to Horare for analysis. For his part, Zashiri drafted a letter to Delacama, a copy of which he sent to Lutheran Church Headquarters in Buluwayo. Dated July twenty-second, nineteen ninety-five, the letter began, "Ray, unexplained deaths, Manene Designated District Hospital. There has been a sudden rise in unexplained deaths in the hospital. This led to a lot of questions and rising of eyebrows within the Manene community, hence the coincidental findings and reports given to me by the staff. The matter is already known to you, but I still believe it is more appropriate to put it in writing." The letter briefly summarized the mysterious deaths of Malamvana, Chipoko, Ingwena, and Jo. The last two patients worried every health worker in the hospital. I could tell the staff had something to tell, but they could not. I had to probe the sisters in charge of the wards, and to my surprise, there was a lot told. I have a lot of written statements from the nurses, and I received today, the twenty-third July, zero eight hundred hours, after yesterday's proceedings, yet another piece of information about Mr. Khataso Shava, fifty-two years, male. This patient was in the ward admitted eighteen June nineteen ninety-five, died twenty-sixth June nineteen ninety-five. Sudden death in the ward. I am not aware of this death, but the sisters have a lot to tell." This was too much for Zashiri. Writing to Delacama, he described his reactions. "I panicked. I felt I could not handle this." Zashiri was by now under considerable stress. He worried that he might be held accountable, either by the Lutheran Church or by the government, for deaths occurring on his watch. He realized as well that Swango was entitled to some sort of due process, although, never having been confronted with such a dire situation, Zashiri wasn't sure what procedures should be followed. At the same time, he didn't want to be viewed as a troublemaker, a whistleblower, someone who might bring scandal upon the church and government. All of this is evident in his concluding passage. "Finally, I would like to take this opportunity to say, I am not against Dr. Mike. He is my personal friend, but the authority I was given by the Ministry of Health and the Evangelical Lutheran Church in Zimbabwe, I feel it's a must that I take up these issues to you, the responsible authorities. And I have to safeguard the good works of Manene Hospital as a district hospital. In addition, not a single one of the above patients was directly under my day-to-day care, but as overall in charge as DMO, District Medical Officer. This is only a report as given to me. Thank you. Dr. C. Zashiri, District Medical Officer." In mid-August, Delacama received a letter from Swango, warning him that something nasty was likely to land on his desk from Manene, and that if his suspension remained in effect, the Manene doctors and the mission will have to bear the consequences. Delacama angrily replied that he would not respond to such threats, and that he stood behind the decision to suspend Swango from his position as a doctor at Manene. Delacama phoned Mpofu in Buluwayo to inform him about the letter, telling him he thought the situation with Swango at Manene was very unsafe. But Delacama did not have the authority to terminate Swango's license to practice medicine in Zimbabwe. That action could be taken only after cumbersome administrative procedures at the Ministry of Health. So Mpofu agreed that the church would assume responsibility for removing Swango. On October thirteenth, he drove to Manene, and personally handed Swango a letter from the Evangelical Lutheran Church formally terminating his employment. Without being specific as to the causes, the letter cited a pending investigation by the Ministry of Health and Child Welfare, and added, "Also be advised that the community you have been recruited to serve has since expressed their disgruntlement with you. Your services are terminated." The letter was signed by S.M. Dubey, the Secretary-Treasurer of the Evangelical Lutheran Church in Zimbabwe. Mpofu was frightened that Swango might react violently, but all Swango said was that the allegations were unfounded, and that he would be consulting a lawyer. He was given a week to remove his belongings, but several nights later, Zashiri noticed that Swango's cottage was dark. Swango had left without saying goodbye. Though he had left quietly, Swango's letter to the effect that the doctors at Manene would have to bear the consequences left Zashiri and Larson skittish, fearful that Swango would return to exact his revenge. Zashiri resigned his position at Manene to pursue additional studies in Horare, citing his fear of Swango. When Larson's contract expired at the end of the year, he and his family returned to Sweden. No doctors responded to ads seeking to replace them. The nursing staff, similarly afraid that Swango might re- The nursing staff, similarly afraid that Swango might return at any time, did its best to care for patients who were not only sick, but, in many cases, terrified. Stories of mysterious deaths at Menene circulated throughout the Imberengwa region, passed from homestead to homestead, village to village. Some said the Menene nurses were practicing witchcraft; others spoke of a sinister doctor in a white lab coat. Many heard hearsay accounts of Kneas Mzazewas and Virginia Subanda's injections and seizures. Increasingly, people in the bush turned to traditional healers for care. Admissions to the hospital dropped off. Impofu, who had greeted Swango with such enthusiasm, and had been so happy to recruit a doctor from America, was stunned to find that Swango's legacy might be a mission hospital bereft not only of doctors, but also of patients.
That will wrap us up for Chapter Ten. We'll pick up next Thursday on Chapter Eleven, Catherine Massey Book Club, Context of White Supremacy. Number to dial, six oh five, three one three, five one, six four, decode, five six four, nine four three, pound, press star, six one, if you would like to participate. Number again, six zero five, three one three, five one, six four, decode, five six four, nine four three, pound, press star, six one, if you would like to participate, the email, Email number two. Greetings, Gus and callers. Chapter Nine. One, Carol Carlson, the counselor, she insisted that Swango wasn't to blame. Uh, you know, Kristen, she could be manipulative too. Michael was a wonderful person. Maybe the title of this book should be, "They Were Blinded by the Blonde Hair and Blue Eyes." Could be. Number two, Miller replied, but then moved by Swango's seeming contrition, he qualified his remarks almost in spite of himself. He found himself feeling sorry for Swango. To be white. To be white. Three. All the doctors in the intensive care unit were rotated. South Dakota University and hospital officials rushed to reassure the public. There was some accountability imposed on the medical schools. Stony Brook, Dean Cohen called Miller, "I think it would be best if you resign as chairman of the admissions committee." Then, only two weeks later, Cohen himself resigned. Deceptions and lies. Accountability. You must be joking. They kept their jobs in patient care at the hospital, I presume? No indication they resigned from the institution. Being a part of the admissions committee may not have been a paid position. Very important distinction, and that's not even a firing or anything of the sort. Zero accountability. Four. Did federal authorities issue a warrant for Swango's arrest on charges of defrauding a federal facility, the VA Hospital? FBI agents thought they were investigating a potential murder case. It hadn't occurred to them to seek a warrant for his far lesser offense or incompetence by those in law enforcement. And just, I mean, white criminals, man, like, I think if this had been Leroy or whatever, OJ Simpson, anything that we can do to get them into our custody, and then we can look at other cases and such once we get our hands on it. Chapter Ten. Impofu introduced him to Dr. Swango, whose blonde hair and fair complexion reminded him of some of these Swedish missionary doctors. How many times is Swango's blonde hair referenced in this text? That's what I said. Charming? I said that last week seventeen times, like, really? Everybody in the world's, oh my God, he's so beautiful, and, oh my God. Two. Zashiri, why are you coming from a rich country like the United States to the bush? "I love Africa," Swango replied. "I love blacks." I found this statement analogous to saying, "I love cats." I often have heard suspected racists say similar things. It always makes me cringe. Anytime I hear anyone say, "Oh, I just love black people." He didn't even say, "I love black people." He said, "I love blacks." Oui. Run. Even if somebody classified as black says that, run. Chapter Three. Or number three. Uh, Zashiri discovered that Swango had trouble with routine surgery and seemed never to have delivered a baby. Incompetency is not a deterrent for employment for suspected racists. Think of incompetent carries. See Cal's programs on workplace racism. Four. Swango was never anything but helpful, attentive. Dr. Abdi Mesba, who was almost instantly suspicious of Swango. An Iranian national, Mesba criticized Swango's skills as a doctor puzzled over the vague references, concluded Swango must be a CIA agent. Interesting. Would this doctor be considered white or non-white? Since the author didn't comment on how handsome he was, I suspect he was considered non-white. I suspect his suspicion was heightened due to Iran's history with the USA. Could be. Number Five. Lorimer, tall, good-looking, and athletic, was a resident in surgery, and Swango said he was eager to improve his surgical skills. When I first read this, for some reason, I thought Lorimer was non-white because he was a resident. Maybe I just, maybe I was just hoping, but of course, there is no non-white person in this book described as good-looking. I'm still learning. I was wondering, too, now he said good-looking, I immediately thought, oh, it's gotta be a white person. I was just waiting for the blonde hair and blue eyes part, but then later on, he says that Lorimer is Irish, so it's, oh, okay, this might be a red hair, ginger hair, as they call it, pale skin, fair skin, so-called, uh, person classified as white. Uh, they were in the news this week, Ireland. Six. Lorimer was amazed by how well-read Swango was. Racist white supremacists are the smartest people in the known universe, no doubt. But man, I am, I am baffled. Swango doesn't even seem particularly well-informed in his own subject matter, like, students, his own white med school students were saying he should be kicked out of the program because he's incompetent and all the rest, so, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I don't know what to make of that at times, like, how is he so informed about all these other random subjects, what's going on in Bosnia and everything else, and he doesn't even know rudimentary medical ass, I, I don't know, I don't know. Number Seven. Uh, the beleaguered white community there would no longer have embraced anything charming, and it would have no doubt have embraced any charming, handsome, young, white, American doctor who had come to live in their midst, depressed by years of immigration, the failure of white rule, and the constant fear that their remaining status privileges, economic security, and even physical safety could be shattered by dictatorial decree comforting them due to their fears of white genetic annihilation. Eight. Dr. Larson told Zashiri that something about Swango made him uneasy, and he didn't want his children to be around him. A few complaints from the nursing staff, nearly all of whom were black Lutheran nuns, that Dr. Swango was irritable and rude, too. There were even a few murmurings that Swango was racist. All this was discounted by Zashiri. The healthcare people who could be classified as black seemed less suspicious of Swango than the whites. The way this chapter is written, but I am not sure. I don't know, it's, there's certainly lots of people in this book who think Swango is a cool dude and are ready to defend him and all the rest of it. Uh, it seems like the nurses, and some of the nurses in Ohio State, thought there was something wrong with him, but they were kind of discounted. Remember, he said that before in saying it was all white doctors who were making the decisions, so, I don't know, um, man, to be in Africa, and you think this guy's racist, like, oh, hush. Although the same thing could happen here, the power of white supremacy racism here being the US. Nine. Nineteen ninety-five, Swango, Rhoda Malamanava, collapsed and was dead. Mzewa was paralyzed and unable to speak. He recovered sufficiently to tell nurses that Dr. Mike had given him an injection. Khataso Shava was recuperating. Doctor has injected me with something, and I think I'm gonna die. Philamine Chipoko had suddenly died. Virginia Subanda, Dr. Mike gave me an injection. Stephen Mugamere, venereal disease, died. Nguena was pronounced dead by Swango. Margaret Zhou was found dead. It seems that Swango took his murderous crimes to a new level of atrocities. Did he feel that no matter how much terrorism he inflicted, there would be no consequences because the victims were black and they were in the bush? And, you're not even a Negro, you're an African. Thank you, Nick Minnolti, Hotel Rwanda. But all of that being the case, like, really? How are they gonna find out? What do they know? We're in the jungle. He said that. We're in the jungle. Ten. Zavashani is a dusty place with an aging asbestos mine as the center of the economic activity. The police station is a cluster of three tin-roofed open-air buildings grouped around a small courtyard shaded by a jacaranda tree, typical of areas where a lot of non-white people are allowed to live. And even that, that's the police station. What are they gonna do? They got a tin shed. Says in CSI. Number Eleven. Dalakama had concluded immediately that the police had to be notified and brought into the case. This was in contrast to the approach taken at Ohio State. I think pretty much all of the institutions, I don't think they went immediately to the police, like, this guy's gotta be stopped, we've got to do something. Number Twelve. Swango's comments to the effect that "as Africa was a jungle, syringes can be used repeatedly without harm." Swango added, "In the Congo, injections were used again and again." Spoken like a racist white supremacist, indeed. Number Thirteen. Stories of mysterious deaths at Menene circulated throughout the Imberengwa region. Some said that, some said the Menene nurses were practicing witchcraft, sinister doctor in a white lab coat. People in the bush tended, turned to traditional healers for care. Admission to the hospital dropped off. Swango's legacy might be a mission hospital bereft not only of doctors. The people most to blame for this are the racist white supremacists, for sure, and I mean, the people who need the most help. Harriet A. Washington, she wrote a whole article in the New York Times, I already shared it, where she talked about this, black people on the continent being leery of white doctors. They didn't say Nurse Rivers, they said people like this. Wuta Basong, that's who they referenced, not Nurse Rivers. White man, white woman, Lucy Letby, Renee Bach, white lab coat, eh, run, run, I'll take my chances with the witch doctor, you know? That's not crazy? That's not mumbo jumbo? That's, man, white supremacy racism, you get left with a lot of bad choices. So do I trust Mike Swango? Go without medical care. Bad choices. Bad choices. Uh, let's see, folks who dialed in, if you have a hand-up, commentary to share, line should be open, see if we can get in our other emails as well. Victim in New Jersey should be with us. Might not be in a place where he can share yet, we'll check back, maybe?
Oh, yeah, got, yeah, got something else to house.
Uh-oh, you disappeared. Did you mash your mute button accidentally, or? Not hearing you, not hearing you. Are you with us? Are you with us? Could be racist interference, too. You get Swango? Not hearing you, not hearing you. Uh, hmm, how wacky. Uh, dial back in if you got disconnected, we'll look out for you on the switchboard. I'll read in one email while you're getting reconnected with us. All right, email number three. Dear Mr. Renegade, thank you for selecting Blind Eye to read in the Catherine Massey Book Club. I agree that it is the most interesting of the books read this year, and I believe it read in conjunction with Medical Apartheid would be worthwhile reads for non-white people. Throughout Blind Eye, we have read where James B. Stewart discusses how smart Michael Swango was. Swango was at the top of his class in high school, in college, and even supposedly did well in some of his medical school classes and certain aspects of his residencies, but then we hear about how in medical school, he cheated on tests, plagiarized reports, was unable to identify the heart on the X-ray, something he should have been able to do, and how badly his residency at Ohio State went. I wonder, was he ever smart? Was he just a master deceiver and a beneficiary of white supremacy racism? It may have been easy for him to lie and cheat in high school and college, but medical school and the residency programs did seem to expose his shortcomings, even with white doctors lying about his performance. Also, with all we heard about Swango's disastrous residency at Ohio State, and then the kind of doctors the university hired, and the nefarious activities the medical staff were involved in, it makes me question the high standing of that medical institution, and in fact, anything that is highly ranked by a, by white people in the system of white supremacy. The reading from last week mentioned how great Swango was at the VA Hospital in South Dakota, and how he taught classes in advanced cardiac life support. How lame must the medical personnel have been for Michael Swango to be teaching them a class? I have been thinking about Swango's access to medical schools and the residency program at Ohio State, and the offer of residency at the University of Iowa, and I was wondering what role his father's military career played in Swango's access to these coveted positions. I think because of his father's high military rank and involvement in the covert Phoenix Program during the Vietnam War, this may have influenced those who were selecting individuals for access to medical schools and residency programs, not to mention Swango's own service in the Marines. The story that Stewart tells in the beginning of the book about Swango and the non-white black male in Zimbabwe seems to me to be a racist homoerotic joke to mock black people, and black people in Zimbabwe in particular. The story contains some themes that I have noted in racist homoerotic humor. Stewart conveys in the story joke how dependent non-white people, non-white black people are on white people, the power and total dominance of the white man over the weak and vulnerable black male, the non-white black male being naive, gullible, and trusting the black male being a sexual object. Swango, a white man inserts a phallic-type object syringe into the buttocks of a black male. In addition, it is also an opportunity to mock the freedom fighter and then-President Robert Mugabe and the people of Zimbabwe because they hold cultural and religious beliefs and values that oppose anti-sexual behavior. These victims of white supremacy, who despite having so-called independence, are still very much dependent on white people and their benevolence, as are all non-white people, for sure. Gusty at the top of that list. I have noticed a couple of recurring themes in the book club this year, the interest in witchcraft, devil worship by the white subjects of the books, right? You can run that from Columbine all the way through now, Jeff Dahmer and all the rest, even Casey Brunel, right? She was gonna kill her parents. The homoeroticism displayed by the authors toward their books, that, man, you can run that all the way back to Black Men in Brazilian Soccer. Dave Cullen, all the way through. At least three of the killers studied this year seemed to have some interest in witchcraft, devil worship. Eric Harris had pictures of demons in his journal, and both he and Dylan Clevo were mocking one girl in the school library, not Casey Brunel, about her belief in God. Jeff Dahmer had Satanist paraphernalia and a satanic altar, and Michael Swango had books on witchcraft, devil worship. Speaking of Casey Brunel, I believe before her conversion, she was alleged to have practiced witchcraft, devil worship, and wanted to kill her parents. Echo, echo. And was encouraged to by her friends. To me, this interest in witchcraft, devil worship seems to be one of the many signs showing how evil white supremacy culture is. We did read old Jeff Dahmer right in the middle of Halloween. They had Jeff Dahmer costumes and Columbine costumes. Another aspect is the homoeroticism of the authors. Both Dave Cullen and James B. Stewart seem to convey in their books a strong physical attraction, even lust for the killers. Many references were made to the physical appearances and even sexual prowess of Reb and Vodka, and now Double O. This happens so frequently in both books that I call into question the authors' objectivity in their analysis of the killers about whom they wrote. The killers are portrayed way too favorably for being killers. Agree wholeheartedly. I recall hearing discussions about James B. Stewart's sexuality in previous book club discussions. I don't know if it was ever confirmed on a program, but I dear him, did hear him identify as gay in an interview he did on CNBC. Growing up as a gay person in the nineteen-fifties forced me to be competitive, Jim Stewart says, the New York Times columnist, nineteen-fifties. Oh, it's got the article link, too. I think this may help to explain his lust for Swango and the racist homoerotic joke story he told at the beginning of the book. Yikes! That was assed. We did not get confirmation. I have to read this report, but, woo wee, that is so Dave Cullen, right? One of our writers-participants talked about that repeatedly, and it made total lucid sense. That would line up nicely, him also being having another gay white man, and why did we have to start this book, Needle in the Buttocks of a Black Male, and to get it two times, and it only happens when he's injecting black males? Phew. Delectable Negro. Human consumption and homoeroticism in US, really, white culture, white supremacy culture, worldwide, just do the same thing, worldwide. Much obliged, uh, kind sir. That's three. Let's see. Oh, we got Victim in New Jersey. Got him back. Let's try it again. Victim in New Jersey, second time around.
The whole, I'm... What's saying was, um, yeah, so, it just seems like, um, the author... What's saying was, um, yeah, so it just seems like, um, the author, you know, um, I don't know if it's cognitive dissonance. I mean, I don't know what this can be classified as because it all, it speaks about his incompetence. He doesn't have knowledge about surgery. Then it, then he plays up how handsome he is and how informed he is. And I'm wondering if that's to give cover and to make an excuse for the incompetence of the doctors who allowed him to kill and terrorize, you know, cause, um, some, some, um, some weeks ago, they talked about he went to Ohio State. If I, if, if I heard it correctly, um, they said that Ohio State had like the top, at the time, had like the top two medical facility in the country. So, these are like top-notch white people, you know? These, these are, these, these aren't, you know, average, regular, dumb white people. These are top of the intelligence as it relates to the medical field. And this man was able to, um, to fool them. But again, just like with Jeffrey Dahmer, they tried to play up that these men are masterminds when they, when a lot of times they were very sloppy. Um, if they would have, if they would have paid, you know, a quarter of attention to these killers, they would have saved countless lives. But just, just based on the system of racism, white supremacy, an incompetence that they were allowed to get away with these, um, these, these acts. Um, when they said that he, uh, what did they say? Uh, when they, when he was arrested in Africa and they said, hey, listen, you know, we don't want you near any other medical facilities. And I'm like, you know, not funny, but sad and tragic. Uh, he wasn't supposed to be around any facilities, even in the United States. Again, if people would have done the proper background checks, it wouldn't have been allowed. Um, he seems to get a kick out of, he enjoys informing, um, relatives, um, um, about the deaths of their loved ones, you know? Um, and also, um, I looked up, he's in ADX Florence. I think that's in Florida. If I'm wrong, someone can correct me. Um, I think it would have been justice if he would have been serving life in Africa. You know, that, that, that would have been justice to me, but, you know, but I hope, that's all I ask.
Much obliged, Victim in New Jersey. Uh, importantly, old Double O. is serving his time in a supermax in Florence, Colorado, just like Timothy McVeigh, Ted Kaczynski, Eric Ru, Reb Vodka, right down the road. I said, that's what Colorado means. Bad land of bad white people. Super criminals, super terrorists, can't do nothing with. We just send them to Colorado. Let's see, uh, B. in Santa Rosa. Did you have additional commentary? Just listening or did you have additional commentary? B. in Santa Rosa?
Oh, yeah, um, just wanting to piggyback on the incompetence of, of all the white people involved. It made me think of that, uh, that book you, uh, you guys read on the, I think the Bayou Killer. How the guy was a high school dropout, but all these smart, uh, uh, college graduate, um, detectives confined to do for about 20 years. That's it.
Ronald J. Dominic right in Louisiana, and that's the same time period because he was killing people in the eighties, nineties. He didn't get caught until after Hurricane Katrina in the early 2000 aughts, as they call it. Um, but yet Ronald J. Dominic, and he was exclusively ki, or for the most part, black males. He did kill a few white people, but mostly, uh, black males and operated for a very long time before he was caught as well. Uh, let's see, with the, I'm still kinda going back to the, the author being gay and wish we had known at the beginning, but been talking about the needle part and all that as we go. You learn. Um, let's see, I'm going back, see if I can get some of my notes from the beginning. I didn't even get all my notes from the last section. I had so many highlights, I can't emphasize enough. Try to read a little bit about, uh, everything. Uh, let's see. When, even going back with Kristen Kenny, when her parents, white Al and Sharon, they go to the authorities and they say, we're not interested in this. What do you mean? What do you mean? He could be killing patients and all. What about that Hippocratic, if this had been rental James, that's what you'd have said, nah, 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 nah. I think one of the callers said, white people show far greater interest. You got a black person, you're accused of stealing a rubber band. Whoa, 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 call in SWAT, ATF. You, a Lucy? You mean like a cigarette? Uh, SWAT, right now. Do we have the bomb squad? We got a Negro selling cigarettes. That's what I've seen. That's my observation. I could be, this dude is a convicted felon on top of everything else. Is this, nah, nah, nah. You got any raping Negroes? We'll be there immediately. Let's see, the, all, again, it's charming. He gets to Africa and his first thing, blonde, fair complexion. He's, they said Swango had something of a nervous twitch in his eye. Perhaps he wasn't used to the bright sunshine. Is that because he's melanin deficient and the sun was leaning on him so hard on the continent? Is that what that is? Let's see. Again, anybody said, any, anybody, white person, non-white person, anyone says, I love black people, run. The word earnest gets used a lot in this book too. Uh, Swango seems so idealistic and earnest. Zishiri thought that maybe he was becoming too cynical and thinking, why would he be coming over to the bush and you can get a better job in the US and make more money and all that? Like, with, nobody tells me that I'm earnest. I've been doing this radio program for 15 years. Nobody says, wow, you have an earnest commitment to count, and eh, eh, eh. What is so earnest about this white dude? What's so charming about this white dude? What's so intelligent about this white dude? Let's see. The influence of the religion of white supremacy racism where these church institutions control so much in Zimbabwe, like, wow, white sup, the religion of white supremacy. Uh, he's lied about all of his letters and such from different white people and master deceiver. Uh, let's see. Swango is familiar with all of the classics Dickens, Jane Austen, Tolstoy, Dostoevsky, white authors, those are the, not James Baldwin, not Toni Morrison, not Maya Angelou, eh, 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 eh. Uh, the medical staff, some of whom felt derelict in their own attention to matters outside the field, came to rely on his trenchant analysis of, of current events like, are you flipping serious? What? That's what I mean. Like, it could have been any, you could pick any black person. I seriously doubt it would have been, wow. She's just so informed. That old Double O. Welzing, she's just so smart and well-read and knowledgeable. Maybe, I don't know. I don't even know if Swango is into all of that. If he's just, I'm a talkative white man and I know my blue eyes and blonde hair that I can just come in and say anything and they are afraid of white people and think we're gods, religion of white supremacy, so they won't question me and say, you know, Swango, I think you're full of it. Maybe that's part of it. Who knows? Let's see. The, we already talked about the white people being so happy to see him in that part of the world. Discuss the Catholic Church in this region. I know they had to have some sort of sexual abuse. I'll have to look for that for next week. Uh, let's see. Anytime, all of this where some of the individuals are getting a certain fear about Swango, hey, wisdom, or excuse me, not, well, wisdom of psychopaths too, but the gift of fear, we read, well, we read both of those in the Catherine Massey Book Club, like, hey, that at least calls for questions. It doesn't say that the person is guilty or that it has to be something nefarious, but it at least means more questions. Let's investigate and make sure nothing is awry. Let's err on the side of safety until those questions are answered. Let's see. Also his vagueness, where they ask about his background and things of that nature and he gives vague responses, that also is important, at least in my opinion, uh, that not answering questions so common in the system of white supremacy racism, uh, where non-white people even demonstrated on this broadcast often where you ask simple questions. Where were you born? I think they said that, like, ooh, I don't wanna give, you know, exact location. Like, oh, you know, we moved around here and there. That's what I think, cause once I start giving specifics out, things can be verified. I can have precise answers to my precise questions, not his old vague non-responses. White people are so skilled, master deceivers especially, just don't answer the question. Talk and talk and talk and buckets and buckets and dump trucks of words. No answer to your question. Oh my God, he says, he's trying to kill, uh, Kataso Shava. The doctor seemed annoyed to find Shava surrounded by relatives, his son, his sister, and nieces and nephews who were planning to spend the night at the hospital complex. Like, oh, God, that's a, you got to have at least one person. If you can get a whole family, friends, neighbors, all the better. That's more people to ask questions, more eyeball. What are you doing? What are you up to? What's in that syringe? What's that supposed to do? Are there better alternatives? What's gonna happen? Oh, question, 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 and get answers, not a whole bunch of vagueness and, oh, you don't know and shut up. No, 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 you can explain. What's, what's all that? Just explain that we, this, you know, loved one, we care about her, we care about him. What are you doing? Mad, cause I got these people here I wanna kill and they can't, nobody see me. See, uh... Let's see. The, I was stunned. They even said that one of the black patients who he tried to kill, they were, Swango did the same thing he did here in the States. Oh, they're hallucinating, they don't know what they're talking about. And they were able to give exact details. Where was the syringe? What was the color of, of the solution? He dropped the cap to the syringe on the floor that they recovered all of details, accurate details. Now, I mean, that is an extraordinary burden. You're, you're sick at the hospital. That's another one. If you have witnessed your family, friends, they can be the ones to all the details. This is what he had on. Hair, name, time, date, dropped on the, boom, 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 boom. Run it down so that you don't have that burden. But that is one of the anecdotes to deception. Accurate details and as much detail as possible. Uh, let's see. Oh my God, they continue. They said, he's killed this black female. Word of the incident spread through much of the hospital, though no one mentioned it to Zishiri or Larson. Some patients now began saying they didn't want to be treated by Swango. One of them, Steven Mu Gomari, who was suffering from venereal disease, dis, demanded to be discharged, claiming he had suffered a painful reaction after an injection from Swango. His relatives tried to persuade him to say among, uh, uh, persuade him to stay. Among them was his niece Edith Nguwinya, a nurse's aide who worked with Swango. She was such a staunch defender of him in the face of the rumors, which she attributed to some nurse's resentment over his treatment of them. Even that, I had to pause, like, you mean the nurses who thought he was racist? His racist treatment of them? She thinks, oh, you all are just mad, cause saying, saying this is an old racist white man. What's, like, what? What? One, again, we are reading a white author. He could be practicing racism. Maybe he made this up. I don't know. It's not footnoted, but man, I could believe that this is true. We are victims. That's how we get brain trashed and it's not racism and this is a good white man. I just said, religion of white supremacy racism. I know, they got a representation of white Jesus that probably looks a lot closer to Joseph Double O. Swango than myself or Double O. Welzing. Haven't been to Zimbabwe, but that's my guess. Doesn't look like Robert Mugabe either. That's just my guess. Dang, can you, y'all are just being mad. We got this good white man to come over. I could totally believe that. Victims of racism and we've been in fear of white people. They said that repeatedly. Uh, let's see. After, so then he kills Nguwinya too, we think. Says Swango was professionally detached from the other desk, but he had worked closely with Nguwinya and to all appearances had liked her. She had been his strongest defender within the nursing staff. He seemed genuinely upset by her sudden death, still in mourning over Mugur, Mu Gomari, who had left five children as orphans. Nguwinya's family was distraught and likely to be even more impoverished when, but, oh, wait a minute, they were wary of Swango and upset when he said he wanted to attend the funeral, but then he bought them a coffin and after attending the funeral, where he seemed genuinely bereaved, he bought groceries for everyone who attended. Man, I hope he didn't touch any of the groceries. And I lost my place with you. They were touched by these acts of kindness and generosity when one of the relatives insisted that Swango be reported to the provincial medical authorities or at least to the hospital director. The family overruled him, arguing that the deaths were likely caused by witchcraft by some of the nurses. They argued that it was inconceivable that Swango would have done anything to harm Nguwinya when he was willing to buy her a coffin and attend the funeral. Now again, author could be lying. It's not a footnote directly there, but man, I, I could believe this and I have witnessed this where we do not grasp. Racists, they've stolen everything. It's very easy for white people who have all the booty, and that's the word I intended, they can, here's a piece of cornbread. Here, have 50 extra pieces of cornbread. You need some, let's go get you awesome chitlins. Everybody get, chitlins on me. Mikey has got everybody. Everybody's gonna get a big, uh, trough full of chitlins tonight. How about that? From your good friend Mike, cause I, I sure do miss Nguwinya. It's easy for them to do that. Like, we got these old poor starving niggas. They do that sort of thing here. Come and bring us a bowl of Spam or what have you down in Katrina and, oh, Brad Pitt brought us a peanut butter sandwich. Oh, this is the coolest white man ever. You know he's not a racist. Religion of white supremacy in there too. I'm coughing too. And the same thing to come, I get the revel. I killed him, I fooled him, and then I can come and hang out at the funeral. They say that about the serial killers. They like to do the killing and then come back and appreciate their work? They say, it was also obvious to both Zishiri and La Kama that such a situation involving a white American doctor who might be murdering Zimbabweans was politically explosive and could cost both men their jobs. I would have liked more detail on that and even the accusations of racism. Like, what else was he saying or doing that they thought was racist? And then on top of that, on this one, like, be specific. So, what would have happened? It would have been an uproar, like, what in the world? You've let this racist white man in our country and he's killing black people and jabbing them in the rear end? Really? Did they say that? Once all this came out? Is that what happened? Like, they do have, uh, Zimbabwe newspapers. They did talk about this Swango case. Stewart does reference some of them and that's been my side, you know, see if I can get some of those reports as well, but I would be very interested to see, what did they say about all this? Let's see. He's got all these drugs and equipment in his house. Oh, and then he said he acknowledged that he had been on occasion, used unsterilized needles, reused, reused the same syringes. Char, Charcarisa was offended by Swango's nonchalance, later characterizing him as boastful. See there? They brag about mistreating us. See there? I wanna take pride. See what I did? I'm a killer. Hmm, hmm. Oh, yeah, I use this. This niggaville, you know, is a, you know, got their, they're not even Negroes, they're Africans. You know, I don't need to clean no needle law. What's wrong with you? And then see, again, what are y'all gonna do? We're in the bush. What are you gonna do? I'm a white man. You ought to be happy I'm here. We got him looking very earnest and, you know, all that. I love the part two, Zishiri was relieved when Swango left after he comes and gets mad after he learns his privileges at the hospital and all have been suspended. He's under investigation. at the hospital and all have been suspended. He's under investigation. Zishiri was relieved when Swango left the office. He was under the impression that most Americans carry guns, and he feared Swango might have one. Man, I think this is most white people. Now, this is after NWA and gangster rap and all that, so maybe they're thinking the Boys in the Hood and Doughboy packing heat, maybe, right? Menace to society, the menace to the universe is Mike Swango, whites at all. But man, yes, that would be smart to be, this is a white man, he could be packing heat, yes, danger, danger. Uh, let's see. Disgruntlement, uh, I'd never heard of that word. I've heard disgruntled and all that, but disgruntlement. The community that you were charged to serve, they feel disgruntlement. Like, I feel disgruntlement towards the white race. Centuries of white terrorism around the globe. Uh, let's see. And that'll be it for this week. Man, I've learned so much. I think we have two sessions left and then we will be all done with this wacky, wacky book. But, uh, man, if you have additional thoughts, observations, uh, we'll make sure to include thoughts from James B. Stewart before we wrap up in two weeks. We'll be here tomorrow for Neutralizing Workplace Racism, same time, 8:00 PM Eastern, 5:00 PM Pacific. Hopefully worthy of your time and energy. Subriety would be best under conditions of white supremacy. Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people. Victims of white supremacy, we ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. Remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person. It has been time, replace white supremacy with justice immediately. Cow signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.